...for city leaders themselves to take an HIV test.
You would actually take swabs from us and show people just how easy it was.
Simon received the recognition in council, just as council proclaimed March 20th, 2012, National Native American HIV AIDS Awareness Day here in the city of Los Angeles.
Steven, you have been a great ally, advocate, both locally and nationally for our Native American community, and I want to honor and say thank you with that.
The Red Circle Project, which receives assistance from the city's AIDS Coordinator's Office, is the only HIV AIDS prevention program in Los Angeles County that specifically provides services to the Native American, Alaska Native, community.
If our people are affected by this disease, we are not only losing a family member, a tribal member, a culture, a language, we're losing a whole people.
With the exit of the city's HIV AIDS Coordinator comes a reminder that the work of educating and preventing the disease is everyone's responsibility.
Fighting discrimination is the mission of the Anti-Defamation League, or ADL, and as Gil Reyes tells us, the organization has joined with local law enforcement to honor those who have taken a stand against hate.
Among the honorees, LAPD Officer Manuel Arregue. He organized a truce between African-American and Latino gangs in North Hollywood by first reaching out to their families' church leaders.
One of our core values is to treat everybody with fairness, and that's similar to what the ADL also stands for.
The ADL, or Anti-Defamation League, holds its annual awards ceremony. The awards dubbed "The Helene and Joseph Sherwood Family Prize" for combating hate and bigotry.
In all, five individuals and law enforcement agencies are being honored for going above and beyond the call with a message that combating hate crime is a team effort.
So the ADL, Los Angeles Police Department, Sheriff's Department, FBI, the other public safety agencies that are here today, it's a moment to bask in the sun.
So many of them have invited their kids and their families because they don't get this kind of recognition, and so it's really, it's a joy to be able to do this.
Also honored, LA Superior Court Judge David Wesley for his innovative teen courtroom. The courtroom puts high school troublemakers on trial with a jury of their own peers.
Empowering young adults to take an active role in identifying and stemming juvenile crime in their own communities.
Ashley Williams, a self-proclaimed former troublemaker, was mentored by Wesley and became a teen court judge herself.
Thanks to his love and support through my college career, I will be graduating UCLA in June and attending law school, working towards my end goal of becoming a judge.
Law enforcement working alongside communities to reduce hate crimes in Los Angeles. At the Skirball Cultural Center, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Also honored, the multi-agency task force that put a deadly Canoga Park street gang behind bars. Police say the gang targeted African-Americans. Little Tokyo's Japanese-American museum played host to an international summit that aims to move Japan forward, a year after the catastrophic earthquake and tsunami that destroyed parts of the country. Anna Marcos has more.
The world watched their TV screens in horror as wave after wave swallowed entire Japanese villages. It's been a year since the March 2011 earthquake that caused the devastating tsunami off the coast of Japan. Some of the tsunami's young survivors have crossed the ocean to help Japanese-Americans in LA mark the one-year anniversary at this US-Japan Council Summit.
I lost my father to the tsunami caused by the big earthquake in March last year. You are supporting us. Your heart makes our hearts very warm.
Mayor Antonio Villarosa also on hand to help remember a day that these survivors and those with loved ones in Japan will never forget.
I have two about your age. Can't fathom the pain of what it must be like to lose your father in the way that you have.
But this summit is about looking to the future and not just the past. The US-Japan Council has introduced a new public-private partnership called Tomodachi, which means friends in Japanese. It's raising money to support Japan's recovery efforts. So far, the partnership has raised close to $3 million.
What I was most encouraged by was really the resolve of the people.
But much more progress needs to happen before Japan can truly move forward. Organizers at this summit hope their efforts at raising money will help. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The new partnership, Tomodachi, will also help support programs that strengthen cultural and economic ties with Japan. City officials and community leaders celebrate the completion of two new Hanson Dam projects. Rasha Goel explains.
The wetlands restoration and parking lot and a new skate park are the two latest improvements at the Hanson Dam Recreation Center. Both are enhancements which will help the local community recreationally and environmentally.
All of these features had to, had to take on the challenge of, of the environment and work to ensure that we were doing these things in a way that was consistent with the environment.
The skate park is a 6,000-square-foot concrete development that includes rails, bowls, banks, and other skateboarding features, as well as new native planting and an irrigation system.
If you look at what the number-one requested facility is in this city, it's skate parks. And so we felt it necessary, and the council office felt it necessary, I think as an assembly member we felt it necessary, that we bring these facilities to the community.
The Hanson Dam Wetlands Restoration and Parking Lot Project was funded by the voter-approved Proposition O.
130-acre watershed is treated through this system of basins and parking lots. And the basins that hold the rain when it comes should drain in about 72 hours. It also serves as groundwater recharge.
Officials say these improvements are just the beginning of beautifying what they call "the best park in the valley." In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
Animal shelters in Los Angeles are struggling financially, just like anyone else, but they recently got a boost when a food manufacturer donated pet food to help feed the animals. Yana Kay has more.
These adorable puppies are having a great time playing with each other at the North Central Animal Shelter, which has struggled to make its budget work to take care of the animals. But now, thanks to a generous donation from pet food manufacturer Solid Gold, the shelter has got some much-needed help.
This is an amazing gift. It's just incredible. We love it. Our animals are going to be comfortable, well-fed, and happy as a result of this wonderful donation.
Friends of LA Animal Shelters, an organization that helps LA animal services, teamed up with Solid Gold to donate 20 tons of pet food, which can feed about 1,800 cats and dogs for one week. Officials say that pet food prices have increased 10% to 20%, making it difficult for shelters to work within their budgets.
So we decided to work very, very hard with different companies to be able to donate items to city shelters.
Officials at Friends of LA and other animal lovers are encouraging other businesses to take a stand and get involved in their community animal shelters, just like Solid Gold did.
I think that's just, that's very nice of them, and I wish other companies would realize that it's also their job and their responsibility to help out.
Officials say any kind of help will go a long way in making sure these cute canines continue to lead happy and healthy lives. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week.
The donation was shared between the city's six animal shelters. The huge boulder destined for a local museum finally arrives at its destination. Also, no more billboards parked along LA streets, and it's time to get your dog license. These stories and more in City Beat. The 340-ton boulder has finally made its long journey from a quarry in Riverside to the Los Angeles County Museum of Art to be part of Michael Heiser's Levitated Mass exhibit. The over 21-foot-high boulder made a 12-day journey from the quarry to arrive at the museum. Our LA this week camera captured the megalith as it parked for a public viewing near USC at Figueroa Street back on March 9. The artwork will make its official debut at LACMA in November. That's when visitors will be able to walk beneath the levitated mass. The Los Angeles City Council has unanimously approved a ban on all mobile billboards, which residents say are a neighborhood blight.
This is whether they are standing alone or attached to a motor vehicle on any Los Angeles city street.
The new ban requires the city to issue a warning to a first-time offender at least 24 hours before impounding the vehicle. Subsequent citations would include a fine and possible jail time. The Los Angeles Parks Foundation partnered with the USC School of Landscape and Architecture to assess, develop, and conceptualize an ideal urban park for the city of Los Angeles. Those improvements can be found at Hoover Recreation Center, located at 101025th Street in Councilman Ed Reyes's district. At the park, you'll find new fitness equipment and a walking trail. The Los Angeles Parks Foundation received a generous donation from the Warner Family Foundation to support the construction of these park enhancements. And if you haven't gotten your dog's license yet, now's the time to do it. Amnesty for late dog license fees expires on the last day of this month. Humane officers will be canvassing Los Angeles city parks and neighborhoods, checking for current dog licenses. Dogs with license tags can easily be identified and returned home if lost. It costs $20 to license a spayed or neutered dog. An unspayed or unneutered dog costs $100 or more to license. More information can be found at aniонлениснс.ла. city.org. Lizards, turtles, and snakes, oh my. There's now more to see at the LA Zoo, where a new exhibition features some endangered and rare species. Rasha Goel has more.
Nine years in the making, and now, the lair, or living amphibians, invertebrates, and reptiles exhibit is finally open.
But that's a wonderful exhibit that not only talks about reptiles and the connection to that nature, but in the modern world, how we have to build sustainable, valued buildings.
The new facility at the Los Angeles Zoo features 49 exhibits in six themed areas, including one named Betty's Bite and Squeeze Room after actress and zoo advocate Betty White, and a building with a green roof.
There's live plants up there, soil and live plants. It helps reduce the heat that goes back up into the atmosphere and reduce global warming. The plants obviously add oxygen to the environment as well.
The murals in the building, as you walk through, you will see, are all hand-painted with different art, by different artists, representing the natural habitats of the animal places and exhibits.
At this exhibit, there are over 60 species of amphibians, invertebrates, and reptiles from across the world, including places such as Africa and China. In fact, I'm sitting next to the world's largest amphibian, the Chinese giant salamander. There are a total of four in the country. Two of them are here in Los Angeles. And according to zoo officials, the exhibit gives guests a chance to get up close and personal with these unique creatures.
The fact that you can be nose-to-nose with a green mamba, one of the deadliest creatures on the planet, safely, I think is a pretty cool experience.
This place is just amazing. If you like bugs and reptiles, you know, it's definitely a place to be.
And even if bugs and reptiles are not your favorites, it's still worth checking out some of these creatures who were on this earth even before we were. From Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
In this week's list of things to do, a musical flashback to the 80s, a special day at the zoo for scouts, and an exhibit on one of the Beatles coming to an end at a museum near you. If you love the 80s, then you'll want to catch the worldwide party musical Rock of Ages at the Pantages Theater. The story goes, in 1987, on the Sunset Strip, a small-town girl meets a big-city rocker, and they fall in love to the greatest songs of the 80s. You can catch the musical Saturday, March 24, at 8:00 PM at the Pantages at 6233 Hollywood Boulevard. For other dates and ticket information, go to pantages-theater.com. The LA Zoo is offering junior Girl Scouts and Cub Scouts the opportunity to earn a special zoo patch and spend the day learning about zoos, zoo careers, animals, and conservation. It's all part of its Zoo World Patch Program, which takes place Saturday, March 24, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The LA Zoo is located at 5333 Zoo Drive. To find out the cost and to make reservations, call 323-644-4211, extension zero. And it's your last chance to catch the George Harrison Living in the Material World exhibit at the Grammy Museum at LA Live, the exhibit which opened in October of last year following the broadcast premiere of Martin Scorsese's documentary of the same name, ends Sunday, March 25. The exhibit on the 12-time Grammy Award winner features dozens of items from the private collection of the Harrison estate, including photographs, Harrison's stage costumes, instruments, and personal sketchbooks. The Grammy Museum is located at 800 West Olympic Boulevard, Suite 8245. More info can be found at gramymuseum.org. And remember, you can find this information on our Facebook page, and that's a look at some upcoming things to do. Everybody knows about Chinese New Year, but in LA's Chinatown, just like in the old country, the impending arrival of spring brought out families to celebrate another festival, the Lantern Festival. The El Pueblo de los Angeles Historical Monument came alive with the clanging of gongs and the rhythmic dancing of dragons. What's usually the home of Overa Street was transformed into a modern interpretation of a Chinese village during the Lantern Festival.
We are here on sacred ground because this is where the original Chinatown was. About 3,000 people, 160 years we celebrate. Chinese Americans here who have made this city as strong as it is, and the Lantern Festival is a recognition of that.
The Chinese came to California during the gold rush and stayed to help build our nation's railroads. Today, the Chinese-American Museum, located at the El Pueblo Historical Monument, tells the stories of the earliest Chinese-Americans.
Wonderful displays that talks about, not only about Chinese history, but history of everyone who's ever come to Los Angeles.
But on this day, it was all about the museum's 11th Annual Lantern Festival, which signals the closing of the Chinese New Year festivities.
The analogy I like to use is that Lantern Festival is akin to the Sunday brunch at the end of the Thanksgiving weekend, when fathering, when family gatherings must come to an end, and everybody needs to return to their respective places of daily living and work.
Just like the public streets in old China, the El Pueblo courtyard was festooned with colorful lanterns of all shapes and sizes, which represent joyfulness, luck, and the return of spring.
It's a great event. It has gone on for thousands of years, but we also get to celebrate the Chinese history, the influence, and the contribution to this great, great city.
The Miss Chinatown pageant queen and princesses livened up the festivities even further when they visited the festival-dawning tiaras and traditional Chinese dresses. An auspicious end to Chinese New Year celebrations and the beginning of a prosperous year to come. Chinatown was moved from its original location at the El Pueblo Historical Monument to its current location in 1938. As Chinese-Americans wind down their New Year celebration, Iranian-Americans begin theirs, called Nouruz, which marks the beginning of spring. Anita Bennett takes us to the city's annual Persian New Year festivities at City Hall.
Nouruz Mubarak. That's Happy New Year for many of our Los Angeles residents who are of Persian descent.
For the eighth straight year in Los Angeles mark Nouruz, the Persian New Year with the celebration at City Hall.
Nouruz, the Persian New Year, symbolizes that unique human trait, hope, which allows all of us to move past the difficulties of today and imagine a tomorrow full of possibilities to be better, to do better, to love better, and to be, to better understand the ways of nature.
The tradition dates back thousands of years and is celebrated by people of Iranian descent around the world. As for LA's festivities, they were spearheaded by Councilman Tony Cardenas as a way of honoring the city's Persian residents and workers.
There are over 300 Iranian-Americans that work in various professions and capacities right here for the city of Los Angeles.
Then the councilman made a special presentation to the leaders of the Persian community. And the celebration continued here in the rotunda of City Hall, and among those taking part, Los Angeles Mayor Antonio Villarosa.
It's an opportunity for us to be grateful for the many contributions of Persian culture and Iranian people here in Los Angeles.
The festivities drew residents from across LA County.
It's very important for us, and the more important thing is Americans are recognizing our New Year, and actually, we are very, very honored to be here in the City Hall and celebrate our New Year.
And strengthen the, the community that we have in Los Angeles. That's why we always get together here to celebrate the old tradition for the Iranian people.
This is just the start of the celebration, as Nouruz lasts a total of 13 days. At City Hall, I'm Anita Bennett for LA this week. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at la city view.org. You can also follow us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
When I first came to the US...
I brought my hopes and dreams for a better life.
Since becoming a US citizen.
I'm running for public office.
I've checked with the freedom and security of a US passport.
And I voted for President of the United States.
US citizenship means a better life.
I chose opportunity.
I chose freedom.
I chose responsibility.
I chose to become a US citizen.
I am proud of America.
Hi, I'm Nina. This is my daughter Miranda, and we live in Silver Lake. We love the cultural diversity of Los Angeles. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Now 10:00 AM. Morning, Councilor Pocahontas. Thank you for joining us. Sorry, if you don't mind, please call my colleagues and make sure that they're here. We have a few more forums and it's already 10:10. I want to thank Councilor Bosqueino, Councilor Lloban, Councilor Engler, Councilor Garcetti, Councilor Laban, Councilor Parks, Rosenthal, Councilor Zine, West, and Timmer is present in a forum. Rosenthal, Councilor Zine, and West, and Timmer is present in a forum. A few more councilors than we just started. Okay. Welcome, everybody. It's Tuesday, March 20th. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alacorn, Buscayino, Cardenas, Engler, Garcetti, Wezar, Corretes, Corcoran, Laban, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zine, West, and Timmer is present in a forum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of minutes.
Councilor Garcetti moves. Councilor Laban seconds.
Communitar resolutions for approval.
Councilor Corretes moves and Councilor Corcoran seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Everyone, please rise for the flag salute. Councilor Cardenas, we do us the honor.
Everybody, please stand. Thank you. Begin our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Cardenas. Members, if I could direct your attention to the agenda. Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda.
Mr. President, there is request to refer item 39 to the Rules, Elections, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee and to continue item 50 to March 21st.
Without objection, those items are referred and continued respectively.
Mr. Reyes, Ms. Perry, is her motion on 39 asked to be continued till tomorrow before it's referred? It's her motion, so that's her request.
Okay. Is there objection? City Attorney, we can do this. Yes, let's do that. Okay, next item, Madam Clerk.
Items 1 through 14 are items noticed for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that items 8, 11, and 13 may be received and filed as much as alines have been paid.
Without objection, these items are received and filed. Okay. Any cards?
There are cards on 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 12.
Okay, let's hold those on the desk. Any member wishing to call the items special?
Mr. President, 14 and 36 together, if we could call them special.
Okay. Any other items? Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Next item.
Items 15 through 36 are items which public hearings have been held.
Members, any specials?
29 special.
29?
27, please.
27. Any of the specials? See none. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Next item.
And, Mr. President, for the record, the ordinance says items 2 and 16 will be held over for one week.
Thank you.
Items 37 through 52 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are before us. Councilor?
A 43 special, please, and I had mentioned 14 on the other one. Okay.
Okay. It's 43. Okay, without objection, those items are before us. Any cards?
Cards on 37, 43, 45, and 51.
Okay. No other specials, members? Let's open and close the public hearings on the remaining balance. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Next item.
Item 53 is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold this on the desk?
Yes.
On the supplemental agenda, item 54 is an item for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are before us. See any cards?
Yes, there's cards.
Okay. 54 special? Councilor Laban, did you have any specials?
Yeah, no, I was just checking. 15, you're gonna, it's our commissioner.
That was already?
It's not on the board.
Item 50 was continued to tomorrow.
15, 1-5.
Oh, 15.
15 was approved.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was 51. Mr. Parks, the one that Ms. Perry wanted was the commissioner?
No.
It wasn't the commissioner, so we got 39. 15, though, is the commissioner who's here. Are we gonna call that special?
We have to reconsider.
Reconsider 15, thank you.
Okay. Let's move in a second to reconsider 15. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thank you.
10 eyes.
Okay, so reconsider number 15. So, Madam Clerk, we are... I think 54 was called special as well?
Yes.
Okay. Any other specials?
Mr. President, that takes us through the agenda.
Okay. So, at this time, we... Let's do the presentation, I believe. Councilor Corcoran.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm happy to have Councilmember Laban join me today as we recognize another milestone in the great and storied history of North Hollywood High School. Mr. President, you know, since the 1950s, when the Soviets beat the United States into space with Sputnik, there has been a great sense of urgency in this country about encouraging the science education because it's science that allows us to continue to develop the cutting-edge industries of the 21st century and it's science that really sets this country apart from the rest of the world. And as that has been a national emphasis, I'm pleased to say that in North Hollywood, it has been a tremendous story of success. The North Hollywood High School Science Bowl team has been absolutely dominant in Southern California and in our nation over the course of the last almost two decades. And I'm very proud today to present the winners of the LA DWP's 2012 Regional Science Bowl, Team A from North Hollywood High School and their teacher-coach Alter May. As the regional champs, the team will receive the Hitachi Scholarship and an all-expense-paid trip to Washington DC to compete in the US Department of Energy National Science Bowl, competing against 68 other teams from 40 states. The team will represent the city of Los Angeles in the Nationals, and we are extremely well-represented by these young people who are here today. I know that the rest of the country always fears North Hollywood High School when they show up for the Nationals. So, I'm very pleased to have them here and to join Councilmember Laban in welcoming them. And Councilmember, I don't know if you'd like to say a couple of words to start off?
I just want to say just real quick, I'm so proud of all our schools in Los Angeles when they're champions, but also, this particular school here is continued reigning champion. And also, this is a great plus for our Department of Water Power that sees the value of education because these may be future engineers and others at the DWP to bring the new green energy that we all want, Mr. Garcetti. So, I want to thank the Huskies and give them a big hand. And I also want to thank the man from DWP, Walter Zeisel, whose passion is not only his job, but this extra community program by the Department of Water and Power. Thank you, Walter.
Thank you, Councilmembers, Council Pro Tem Reyes and members of the Council. I wanted to give a little background on Science Bowl. It's the nation's largest high school academic science competition with some 9,000 students that participate from 1,800 high schools. But also, it's a game show, so it's sort of like the old GE College Bowl with toss-up and bonus questions, except they're all math, science, college-level, very difficult questions to answer. We've been doing this now, this is the 20th time that the department has been involved with it. It's, we talk about educational partnerships, and this is one within the Department of Water and Power because it has support from our management, but also, we have a 10-member volunteer steering committee that helped run it, and we have 100, this year we had 115 volunteers that helped actual on the day of the event. I have some of my colleague volunteers that are here today, and I wanted to recognize them. First, Haddad Mendoza and Sharit Batra, who are the Chair of the Hands-on Committee. We do this, we have a hands-on competition in the afternoon right here. They're DWP employees, and they help run the competition. And then also, our Chair of our fundraising committee, Larry Dalton, he helps us a lot with, especially with the IEEE groups, and I wanted to thank them for their involvement. Also, wanted to mention, like I said, this is a partnership, so we also get, well, Department of Water and Power funds the majority of the program. We do raise about $25,000. Some of the sponsors include First Wind and Hitachi, both at Southern California Regional Action Committee, their foundation, IEEE two groups, the Power Energy Society, Metro LA Chapter, and Industrial Application Society, also Clary Corporation, and then our own LA City View, Channel 35, Gelson's Markets, the Water and Power Community Credit Union, Office Depot, and the LA Dodgers have been providing tickets for the volunteer teams. North Hollywood has been dominant, as Councilman Corcoran said. The team has won seven regional championships in a row, 14 of the last 15. At the Nationals, they've won seven trophies, including a national championship in 2001, and have won three seconds, a fourth, a third, a fourth, and a fifth. We have two other schools that have won national titles. Venice High School won two national titles in '96 and '97, and Van Nuys High won a national title in '95. So, our teams have won 10 trophies over the 20 years or 20 times that we participated, and this is a record for which we can all be proud. The students put hundreds of hours into this, into this competition, and it really showed nationally, and it's something that we're glad to be associated with. So, thank you. I'd like to now introduce...
If I may, I just want to take one moment and ask you, how long have you been working on this, in this role with the city and Water and Power?
I've been doing educational partnerships since 1987. That's 25 years. I've been almost 35 years.
Let's give him a big round of applause for all his hard work. One of the unsung heroes that is really one of the pillars of making this happen, so please continue.
Thank you very much. It was nice seeing you yesterday, too. Let me introduce one of the supporters, main supporters for this program from North Hollywood High School, the principal, Dr. Randy Delling, who's actually been to four of the Nationals and cheered on his team, and he's been very supportive.
Thank you, Walter. Thank you, Mr. President and the city of Los Angeles. We, on behalf of North Hollywood, thank you all for your past support, present support, and future support, especially Councilman Corcoran and Councilman Laban and all the Councilmembers who have worked to support North Hollywood High in particular and public education in Los Angeles. We do appreciate it. I want to thank Walter Zeisel for all of his work for the DWP and thank the DWP for putting this on. If you've ever been to a Science Bowl, it's as exciting as a football game. It actually has all the elements of a football game. There's speed and quickness and some emotional violence in there. It's all pretty good, really fun to watch. And I just, you know, we can't thank all the people who support public education enough. I want you to know from our hearts, we thank you sincerely. And with that said, I do very little. Everybody works with me, and they do all the work and give me all the credit, and I appreciate that. I graduated from Van Nuys High, Walter, so I'm actually a wolf in husky clothing. And with all of that said, once again, thank you all, and I want to thank in particular the students who put in all this work. I mean, these people, you know, for the most part have straight A's or headed to Ivy League colleges, have very busy personal lives, and then they put in all this time to compete at this level. And if you ever go to the national level, let me tell you, that's some competition there. I went to college for 26 years to get here, and I can't answer a single question, and these guys are answering the questions before they're even asked. So, it's amazing thing to watch. I really invite you to come down and see it sometime. And I can't thank the coach enough, Alter May. He is just fantastic. He also did our academic decathlon for many years, and we were way in the top all those years he was coaching. That shows you how much coaching, how important coaching is. And with all that said, I'm going to turn it over to Alter. Thank you all again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll be brief. These students are incredible to work with. They're a lot of fun. I don't know that I can really meaningfully take any credit, but I pretend. I should introduce them briefly, since they're the reason we're here. So, we've got Captain Rin Song. Fantastic. He's in the stressful part of the year where he's waiting on college admission decisions, so most of them don't know where they're going yet. It's coming out this week, next week, all that. He's been amazing as captain. I don't think he wants me to put him on the spot and give him the mic, but he's a great guy. Yeah, there he is. Whatever. I don't know. Whatever. We got lots of pictures. All right, and this is Daniela Danny Bork, also a great guy, just both a biology and chemistry Olympiad semifinalist. Makes him one of the top 100 or 200 kids in the country in both subjects. And, you know, also anxiously awaiting college news, but in the meanwhile, we plan to go win a national championship. So, Danny Bork. All right.
Good job.
All right, this is Vivek Banerjee. He's the lucky one. He got into college early, back in the fall, so he's going to Harvard in the fall, and um-
Harvard, Harvard.
Which he certainly deserves. Another fantastic guy. I can't say enough nice things about him. He's also my TA. He's keeping me sane, grading papers. Vivek Banerjee. We've got Kennedy Agwamba here, who makes the insane commute from Gardena to North Hollywood. Really an insane commute. Fantastic guy. Also waiting on college news, yet another anxious senior. But let's go win Science Bowl first. And we've got the junior on the team, Chiang, so we have some continuity next year. I don't know where he's going to college, but I've got him for another year. It's great.
Congratulations. Good work.
Good job. Good job, Coach.
Just briefly, really like to thank the city council for making the time, to thank Walter for making this happen year in and year out, over and over and over again, my principal for a lot of support. This makes it a lot of fun to teach. I love my job.
One more hand for North Hollywood High School Science Bowl Champions.
Congratulations. Okay, Madam Clerk, given that we have 12 councilmembers on the floor, perhaps we can reconsider 2 and 16? Have we considered 2 and 16?
Okay. Mr. President, you wish to open the roll?
Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes. And now those items are before you, Mr. President. Do you wish to vote on them?
Yes. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Okay, let's take care of 2 and 16. I do know we have our commissioner here, that's item 15. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have the appointment of Mr. Andrew Walter to Los Angeles Convention and Exhibition Center authority.
Welcome, sir. Please take a seat.
Yeah, I pushed my button, but they keep putting me off.
Okay, Councilor Rosendahl?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. We were just together up in the committee meeting, and so for my colleagues and for the public watching this, tell us about your background, why you've accepted this position as Commissioner, and then I'd like some comments about the AEG relationship with the city that we're in the process of doing.
Guy who grew up in Denver, Colorado, the Rocky Mountains, moved to Los Angeles about 13 years ago. Over that time, I've been working. A little closer, all right?
Start all over again. Sorry.
I'm originally from the Rocky Mountains, moved to Los Angeles about 13 years ago. During that time, I've been working for Houlihan Lokey, a global investment bank that's headquartered here in Los Angeles. Got a degree in finance in Denver before I moved out. Now a proud father of three, good family here in LA, and I'm looking forward to giving something back to the city.
And giving it back as a Commissioner, dealing with the Convention Center in downtown LA, how do you see that giving back happen? What do you do?
Well, as part of my job, I've got a lot of experience dealing with finance, also understanding what it takes to put a deal together to negotiate a complex transaction, and there's potentially some upcoming things for the Convention Center that I'll be able to use my expertise and support to help the taxpayers of the city of Los Angeles.
And I like your word taxpayers, because the bottom line is, I don't want the taxpayers holding the bag. I think that AEG is financially significant. They have major development downtown, and thanks to Jan Perry, a lot of leadership came out of her office to help develop downtown. And so at this point, it's how we can balance these interests so the taxpayer isn't holding the bag. Can we count on you to represent us, the taxpayers, not the dealmakers, so that there's comfort among the constituents?
Absolutely. That's my goal.
Okay, that's the goal I'd like to hear. Thank you for stepping up to the plate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, so public comment is not needed, given that we did have a hearing in committee? Do you have Councilmember Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Walter, for putting yourself forward for this position. I was keenly aware, just given your background and your expertise, which I think will bring a lot to the authority, whether you feel satisfied right now in terms of what we're doing connecting the Convention Center and our visitors to the city in general with kind of the sports and entertainment side of Los Angeles, and specifically in the entertainment area, certainly, and I know you're not an airport commissioner, but there's very little feeling when you arrive at LAX, for instance, that you're in Tinseltown, a place where, you know, we have deals that are being made, we have very little, you know, you can land in Milwaukee and you're going to see the tool and die manufacturers there, highlighted in the airport. Here, you have no sense that this is the home of Universal and Paramount and Disney and Fox. What can we do better to connect those two things so that the visitors who come here and those who may book Convention Center really have that tie-in with the entertainment industry here? Do you have any thoughts on what we can do to strengthen that in terms of branding the city of Los Angeles a little bit more aggressively?
Well, I think the branding of the city of Los Angeles is going to be helped a lot by having the best possible Convention Center facilities. Like, there's some modernization that can be appropriative, can be done the right way, certainly attracting the right-tier events and making people aware of it. The brand Hollywood or the Hollywood brands are very well-known and widespread, and bringing more people into the city and giving them a chance to see the city and get out and do the tours and understand what's there is important.
Thanks.
Okay. Councilman Labange?
Members, I think this is a great addition to the Convention Center. His view is not just what he reads in the paper, what he visions as a place to be. Football may or may not come, but the Convention Center is there, and we've got to make sure we enhance that opportunity. And there's no place like LA Live now in Los Angeles. The energy that was there, I took my family out to dinner last week, and we had a wonderful time, and we walked around and we saw all the activity, which then connects with the Convention Center. So there's a driving force there. So thank you for your service and good luck to your family, and I thank you for your opportunity to help Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Give me the camera, I'll take a picture.
Okay. See no one else on the queue? I want to thank you, sir, for your service, stepping up for the city. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we have with us Sean Murphy, Matt Dowd, Zuma Dog. Please come on up. Good morning, sir.
Please. I'd like to give a shout-out to my brother that finished 5:24 in the LA Marathon. Congratulations to him. Our streets need to be repaid, and I hope we don't lay any more people off. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Matt Dowd? Is Matt Dowd here? Don't see him. Zuma Dog? Zuma Dog here? Don't see him. Mr. Herman?
Prior.
Mr. Herman, then we have John Walsh.
Members of council, those who are here, those who are listening, how many numerous awards and distinctions do you have, councilmembers? We're talking about business, and let's conduct business in a manner of making our city of Los Angeles not a little better, but a whole lot better. I'm here today specifically to speak on behalf of people with disability, people under ADA, American Disability Act. The city of Los Angeles has failed on behalf of those people. I support and asking that council really consider what the city attorney is doing when it comes to the waste of the taxpayers' dollars, when it comes to issues of litigation, lawsuits. Mr. Salzberg spoke a couple weeks ago regarding a case with Carmen Trutanovich, AKA known as Zuma Dog. I support Mr. Zuma Dog, and I would like to see a remedy to this long, vicious, ongoing waste of our taxpaying dollars. Let's settle and give Mr. Salzberg his opportunity to improve his life and move forward along with his friends. We, the public, need business to continue. Last week with Ms. Perry, she's right. One woman battling the city, one person, Mr. Herman Armando of Boyle Heights, battling the city for the rights of people with disability, for the rights of the communities. Quality of life issue, Mr. Reyes. When I support William Rodriguez for Council District 1, and I ask those of you in El Surino and Lincoln Heights, support Mr. William. Let's have a change and reform in our new area of councils, and let's look forward to it with the help and support of your votes.
Thank you very much. John, please come on up. Just give us your name.
Good morning. My name is Tina Gruen. I want to commend the many students who've come before you all this morning, showing their great achievements in our local public schools. I want to commend those of you here who do genuinely support our local public schools. I personally have explored many venues for improving the quality of public education. I've worked in several different charter schools, written and received state grants for innovations in education. My programs serve a diverse group of students who would be excluded from many charter schools because the particulars of their at-risk status make them ineligible to apply or maintain enrollment at those schools. As Diane Ravitch pointed out in a recent Huffington Post article called "In Defense of Facing Reality," as long as the politicians continue defunding the schools, and so long as our society continues to tolerate high levels of child poverty and intense segregation, we will continue to have low-performing students and failing schools. I implore the councilmen to not acquiesce to politically powerful special interest groups who lobby to further segregate our children. Please follow the intent of the laws and codes within your jurisdiction in your decisions today and every day. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is the most important post we ever put up. We put it up on Sunday and got 8,500 requests in the last eight hours of Sunday. This is a 100% what we're talking about here, and when you go to that post, you will see a picture of a candidate beheading another candidate with their faces on it. Why? Because candidates have hired private detectives to go into the, sitting right here, or upstairs, or over at the Board of Supervisors, hired private detectives to search the sex lives of the mayoral hopefuls. Now, they in fact found some really incredible dirt on one of the candidates. Now, I'm not going to say what they found dirt on one of the candidates for mayor, but if you go to HollywoodHighlands.org, it's right up there, and everybody knows what's going on. Everybody in the press does, but they won't print it. Your only way you're going to find out what's going on in this city is to go to HollywoodHighlands.org. And we also ripped the lid off the rape surge in Hollywood. I was here four weeks ago when I pointed Mr. Garcetti and said there was a rape surge. Have your office contact me. I'm still waiting. Go to virtualtourist.com, an international website where they explain they're having seven rapes in the last eight weeks, how women are drugged at clubs, thrown on the sidewalk, and raped on the sidewalk of Hollywood. This is, and I have all the information. When I asked Chief Beck on Pat Morrison's show, he said, "I don't know nothing about no rapes. I'm just a dumb cop." It's blood of the rapists, or on your hand, Mr. Rosendahl. HollywoodHighlands.org, find out who the adulterer is.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. We did call up, I believe, Zuma Dog and Matt Dowd, but we're going to allow you to speak, even though you weren't here. Come on up.
Thank you. Yes, my name's Zuma Dog, blogging at ZumaDog.com. And in case you missed the announcement Friday, I too am a mayoral candidate in the 2013 LA mayoral candidacy, and you can find out more at ZumaDog.com. Now, I'd like to know, first of all, why am I running for mayor? I have a six-year history of coming into these chambers. What happened is, the city violated my rights. The very fundamental premise that this country was founded upon, the First Amendment, I felt they violated my rights, so I came here to protest. And then it turns out that I had to sue in federal court, and I won. Meanwhile, while I was here protesting, I found out that this is nothing but a Rico mafia organization that funnels money, pilfers money from the nonprofits. You pilfer it, you buy the stuff from your sister, you know, but Taylor Yard, the mayor sells it to Richard Morello real cheap, then he sells it to DWP real expensive. I want to know, because I heard that the city council and the mayor had to send fake, forged, false statistics regarding the most important thing anywhere, fire department, life and death at risk. So I heard that you guys squandered and stole the money so badly that you had to falsify fire records to say that the response time was good when it wasn't really that good. Then you said, "Well, Jay, since it's so good, we could cut back on the fire because we pilfered, squandered, and lost all the money, and my sister, my friends, and my relatives, and I have it, and my son bought a house with it, and I think the FBI needs to come right in here right goddamn now and investigate this place. The city can't take another day of the corruption. Get over here, FBI. Barack Obama, how much longer can the people-"
Please lower your voice, Mr. Dog.
How much longer can we keep getting fucked up?
Lower the volume and watch your language, sir. That's it. Mr. Matt Dowd, again, we're allowing you to speak even though you weren't president while we called your name.
All right, so, yeah, we won a federal injunction, and so the retaliation we talked about is continued. First of all, I want to just show you, this is what we're going to a federal jury, where we're doing discovery, and I want you to see this, city council. This is all the tickets and evidence and times I went to jail, they're all there. There's like 20 times, one of them, here's a picture so you can actually see it. I went to jail because I had a cardboard cutout of Hannah Montana at Venice Beach. There it is, Hannah Montana, oh, take it down, it's over four foot tall. And they're all in there. There's a bunch, and they're all nicely filed now, and they're all, all the things, including the injunction, but here's what happened. Now they brought in a new ordinance, and I started getting tickets. I brought you the one the other day, Herb Weston, are you listening? Herb and Bill Rosendahl and Eric Garcetti, I hope you're listening too. Eric, you listening?
He's not, yes.
He hates it because it's such a violation of the decor when I talk to him in the second person, but no one else understands what that means. But they wrote me a ticket now for having a guitar case now, Bill Rosendahl. A guitar case for getting tips on the ground because it was extending over the imaginary line of the square. That's a ticket from some dummy named Calhoun. Calhoun, you need to get on another one, Sergeant Gonzalez. But here's what you need to do, like when I was a kid and all through high school and Eric Garcetti, they always said, "Take responsibility for things you do." Like, just take responsibility, grow up, okay? And now it's time for the city of LA to take responsibility because you violated it. We got a federal injunction from Tom Labon's friend, Dean Pregas- violated it. We got a federal injunction from Tom Lebon's friend, Dean Pregerson's dad. He wrote the burger thing about the permits.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Daniel Jones and Henry Marina. Daniel Jones and Henry Marina.
Take responsibility for the...
Then Dr. Tom Williams. Daniel Jones, Henry Marine, and Dr. Tom Williams. Please, sir.
Good morning. It's truly a privilege and an honor...
Please give us your name.
My name is Daniel Jones and it's truly a privilege and an honor to be here before an esteemed body. My comment is, in regards to the occupation, and this is directed to all the law enforcement and all the city services that were there, you treated those people, those patriots, with the utmost respect and courtesy that the situation could afford. And as far as I'm concerned, the Los Angeles Police Department set an example for the world and I would expect that no human being on this planet should expect anything less than near the police department. And I'm here to extend my thank you and gratitude for the job well done on such an important matter. And I thank you very much. I appreciate it. And have a good day. Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking the time, sir. Henry Marine?
Good morning. Henry Marine, Plummer's Local 78th since 1971, former Hackla employee since 1977. My Hackla and COLA paychecks show every hour of government service I provided in the city of Los Angeles. Hackla and COLA MOUs show every percent. The members of this council and the mayor agreed not to pay me, subject to prevailing wage and trust laws. Since 1957, the city can no longer, could no longer provide contributions to union trusts because of separate and distinct pension and benefit accounting rules. As you know, your pension is an employee contribution plan. Union pension plans are multi-employer welfare arrangements. Although you're listed as a member of a multi-employment welfare arrangement by the Southern California Pipe Trades, can't be. I learned the difference between my hours of government service and service to union contractors under collective bargaining agreements. MOU 35 was created under a subscription agreement. It's not a collective bargaining agreement. So everything that you took at will, you should pay interest on because PIPE is the acronym for Property Interest Public Employee. So our past president didn't want to take care of this issue. And it looks like we got a, Mr....
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dr. Tom Williams, then Arnold Sacks.
Good morning, Dr. Tom Williams. Mahaba, kipa, kwais, kwais ketu? I don't know. Arabic. But in Arabic, we have a problem. In Syria, we have a major problem. Maybe up to 10,000 people have been killed this time. People forget that the current ruler's father and brother killed probably around 4,000 in the city of Hama. But what do we do? We approve things such as resolutions to not use or promote racist and sexist slurs on public radio, while people die in the streets, die in the city of Idlib and Homs, maybe in Hama if there's anyone left there. So we have an issue at hand. Syria is being killed. The people of Syria are either having to flee to Turkey or hunker down, but against tanks. I have seen tanks in Aleppo. I have seen the cannon holes in Hama, but there's nobody left in Hama. They went to Homs. And what do we do? We sit around and complain about promoting sexist ethnic slurs. So can't we get a resolution? Maybe have a Syria Day, maybe have a Hama Day, maybe have an Idlib Day in the city of Los Angeles because we do have a few Syrians who have fled to here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker Arnold Sacks, and then Wayne Spender.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. You know, on Friday afternoon, I had to go home and take three showers because you made such a stench here. I've been coming here almost seven years and I never saw anything like it. Over 10 months, a year, 80 meetings, two meetings a week, 80 meetings, over 500 over that period of time. So let's say 50% of them were special meetings. And for the first time, you had a special meeting called that you didn't have to vote on the item on the agenda because the city attorney made a ruling that you could return back to the regular meeting without voting, without closing the items on the agenda in the special meeting. Never heard of it. Never, 50 meetings. President Garcetti never knew about. Did you know about that, President Garcetti? No. Did you know about that, Madam Pro Tem, Mip Perry? No. But it happened here. You didn't choreograph the results, Councilman Weston, but you sure as hell choreographed the meeting. And how about that? All items on the agenda, all 1 through 8, all heard in committee, just like that, just like required by the Brown Act. Another first, cluck, cluck, cluck. Another first in the city council's history. Over eight, seven years of meetings, never saw anything like that. It's like the state legislature in the MTA where they modified state law. One law. Here, city council. Well, let's uphold the Brown Act. City attorney says, according to, what was that pursuant to what ruling there, sir? And you gave the advice to Councilman Reyes regarding resigning from a committee that didn't exist? That's great. What a bunch of saps you are. Yeah, that's right. You did not choreograph the results, Mr. Weston, but you certainly choreographed the meeting. And if you can say that, cluck, 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 then you can say that maybe you did choreograph the results. Because after all that time of talking, nobody changed their vote. 13 to 2 going in, 13 to 2 when you left.
Thank you very much. Wayne Spender?
I had an item today, number 50, which somebody was too chicken to address, and that is the visceral attack on a radio station called KFI. It mentions that there's racist remarks being made on a radio station. And of course, this motion was sponsored by three of the most honorable people in Los Angeles. That would be Jan Perry, who's, since she's taken office, has raised my electric rates, my trash fees doubled and tripled them. And Herb Weston, who was the first king of the city of Los Angeles. He was crowned last Friday with his new council map. And then the double pension dipper Bernard Parks, who despite the city being bankrupt, still takes two salaries. What a scumbag. Now, they want to talk to the station that resides in Burbank, California, because KFI had to leave Los Angeles many years ago for two reasons. Number one, because the city of Los Angeles costs too much to operate a radio station. And number two, Burbank has a real city and a real police force. So taking those two together, the city of Los Angeles wants to make the argument that if you get a radio broadcast within its city limits, that they can regulate it. What a bunch of crap. Because if you can do that, you could take, you could take a transmission by satellite, intercept it from China, and then you would be telling the Chinese government, "Stop doing that. Stop stealing our trade secrets." You have no authority to regulate a radio station. That's under the FCC. So take out your crayons and a coloring book, write the FCC, and file a complaint with the FCC. It stands for Federal Communication Commission. Thank you.
Michael Carrion?
What is Michael Carrion? Once again, I'm here to try to find out how this city can put a property into a situation, putting us into a situation where we're liable for damages. They condemn a property and then they have a lawyer come talk to them and then they uncondemn it? Or they allow the people to live in it while they put up a couple of K rails and have people walk in the middle of the streets and they cause blight in our community? Once again, this wouldn't happen in West LA. That's a quote from my councilman. But it does happen in El Surino. Eight years we've been waiting for this situation to be justified and it's still dragging its butt. And I sit here in front of you, or I stand here in front of you asking, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight council members looking like they're on a cartoon. They look all titty. They're reading their books. They're reading their computers. They're not paying attention to a goddamn thing that's being said here. While when somebody's life is taken...
Watch the language, please.
What's that? I didn't hear you.
The language, sir.
Still can't hear you. So anyways, my point is, this city council doesn't pay attention to anything that comes here. And the only reason I'm here is to make it, make sure that it gets on the record that nobody's paying attention. Now you are. Thank you. Okay? And that somebody's going to die pretty soon from this lack of your taking action. And if that property does fall down, you condemned it, but yet you allow people to live there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amenak.
Good morning, respectable city council members, GFL Angelos. My name is Ademak Nujian. I'm a liberal Democrat, Texas Pan liberal. I run for the seat of California State Assembly for this year primaries, presidential primaries on June 5. I promise to raise taxes against wealthy individuals and rich oil producers and gasoline corporation 50% in order to replenish state coffers, in order to increase social spending, in order to keep social programs up and running, in order to promote business interests, for instance. And actually, I also believe that actually expediting issues of what Section 8 housing vouchers will help retail, excuse me, will help housing development business and help Angelinos to, you know, to, you know, to rent more spacious and affordable housing. And I want to make housing, you know, my affordable housing, making housing affordable my priority. And when I win this seat, win votes a majority, letting black majority of votes, you know, I definitely will contribute much to expedite the issuance of Section 8 housing vouchers so that those lines will be shortened to at least one year. And I also promise to make same-sex marriage law of the land, to uphold the civil rights of sexual minorities. I propose to actually to offer free, free, free six-month pregnancy leaves to all Californian women. I also propose as a part of my campaign to fight wasteful spending, Narcomafin, carap, I condemn overrated Los Angeles City Councilman wages of $170,000 and demand cutting those wages in half. The slogan of American...
Thank you very much, sir.
...is housing corrupt official.
Thank you. Superman?
Already spoken.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you very much. We have two in bad eyes, Rick Nightingale and Donna Perman.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. You know, I mentioned it before that I was brought up in a Catholic school back in the 50s and 60s. And I really want to commit Kurt Carmen for this. He got on the news and this is regarding that play they had about when we voted on number eight and it went to the Supreme, California Supreme Court, that is worthless, that 75% of their things get overturned. And all these stations and these women committees that are on TV just crucified him because he said something about, about the gay situation and so forth. You know, why does he get, you know, somebody in the big liberal, you know, that he stood up, then they all got him, you know? They just crucified him. What gives him the right to come back at that? He had his views. What about all the rest of the people? It was voted on and are we all bigots and so forth? Even the Catholic Church and the Pope and everything? That we're being all prejudiced and bigots and everything? I don't think so. Let's go back to that two years, hundreds of years ago, that you're trying to change a rule. Why don't we go back to the people like these children? If they have such high morals, do you ever hear anybody talking about these people out of wedlock that are having these kids? Have you ever heard the name bastard child anymore? Never. Before, you wouldn't even dream it. You would get like condemned. It would be a horrible thing. Now they honor all the people so they don't get married and, oh, congratulations, you're having another kid. Where is the morals of this situation? They're all in the toilet. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perman?
I'm going to say hello to Mr. Garcetti. I miss you. Anyway, I hope you don't stick it. I'm against this parcel tax. I don't, you don't need to stick it to everybody. Everybody needs to chip in. Even people pay $50, not the only homeowners only. You need to, everyone can pay $50 on people in apartments, people in condos, even people that are low, middle, rich. No, I mean, we don't even know if they're going to use it correctly. We don't know if they're going to keep their word and not use it to all of administration. We need to get rid of Miguel Santana and, because he's supposed to make sure that the council doesn't do free spending. They just try to see how much is available for essential services not to use for goodies and freebies. And of course, we still give all the money to complete those CRA projects. I want to...
Number 54.
And, yeah, number 54, which I'm going to be speaking on, which is wrong to do all that, spend all that money for affordable housing. So these people will have these houses and then pretty soon they won't be able to afford them. We need to honor, respect for the police and the fire department and the non-civilians. And let's see, and we need to have, okay, anyway, we need to be able to not take, spend all the money up and take it on the hides of the city employees. That's wrong. And we need to stop taking and then putting over to the CRA projects and all the little freebies and all these green projects that you guys have going for you. And I'm against the city council members to do double dipping. You shouldn't be able to have a salary from another job while you're working in this job. That's wrong. One salary only.
Okay. That concludes public comment. Madam Clerk, next item?
Mr. President, please request to take item 54 next.
Okay. Item 54 is before us. Councilman Cadenas. Okay, you want to do public comment? We have three cards on 54. We have Marion Fogler, Donna Perman. And it's a little hard to read this writing. It's roles, I believe. Wilma roles.
Mr. Reyes, I put in the card for public comment. If you don't let me, I'm going to sue the city.
No, ma'am, I did call you, ma'am.
You did not.
Okay, you're up.
For a public comment?
Marion Fogler, yes.
Okay, and I put in for 54.
54 is in front of us, ma'am.
No, I'm speaking on public comment and number 54.
Okay.
I get two minutes each. And if I don't get this, I'm going to sue you people in federal court.
Let's go to 54, ma'am.
Okay. What I'm mounting is this, is that there's a bow, tower of bow bow is going on here. Look at the, look at our soldiers. They're rebelling because one just went out... Look at the, look at our, our soldiers, they're rebelling because one just went out and he has post-traumatic syndrome, folks. We're having a fallout and this is very severe, folks. This is an international security problem. We have Iran breathing down our throats and Councilman Rosendahl knows all about what I'm talking about 'cause him and I, we agree on this consensus. I tell you, I saw a guy come home from war and he committed suicide in 1960, nineteen, actually 71. I was there from the Vietnam War, folks, 1971. So I know all about what the trauma of war and you people are just sitting around doing nothing, having your, uh, your, your, you know, your shows and everything. You think everything's just glamorous. We got a war going on here, folks, a real war. You better be ready and also be ready to have your evasive, you know, your earthquake stuff and have yourselves ready for your first, second amendment, have yourself prepared for the use of, I hope to God we never have to, but to protect our nation, we have to defend ourselves, defend others, who, you know, your, your family members have the right to bear and keep arms, defending yourselves with your guns. And God forbid we ever have to come to that. But this is really bad, folks, really, really bad.
Okay, ma'am, you have your two minutes for public comment. If you'd like to make your comment now for public comment?
Public comment?
If you'd like.
54.
You already did that.
I did 54?
Yes. Okay, then let's do 54 now, ma'am.
Okay, the, the problem we're having today is that they're coming to the city workers for, for money. They don't want to give them their pay raises, they keep deferring and they don't do it to DWP. You can't do it to one group and not do it to the other, sir. You can't get away with this and then, and not offer the same thing that you offer to the city, the rest of the city here. The DWP is not, uh, chipping in their concessions so that, so our unions do not give in nothing anymore. And, uh, because you people made an agreement last year that we're not going to have this problem till 2012. So you people cannot go, go back on your word and Miguel Santana needs to go. He has pad public relations for the city because you can't get away with not paying these, the city workers are 10%, I mean, the, not the 10, I mean, the salaries, the pay raises and also the, you cannot keep asking for the concession on healthcare because you made an agreement and you gotta keep your agreement. You cannot get away with this. And the people will rise up to the occasion and from inside, we will throw out the bums out of here, cut your salaries down to nothing, you will be volunteers, you will be just working for nothing.
Mr. President, she's not talking about item 54, I believe.
Well, I'm getting to the point now that I'm saying that this money, you're earmarking for these 40 families, I think this is what I've been talking about. You can't take it off the backs of other people to pay for this. This is a ripoff to the taxpayers and asking to pay for parcel tax $298 for homeowners. This is against the law, against humanity and you are in, you are immoral and you have no values at all, none whatsoever. You, you're, all you guys are is scum.
Thank you very much. Ms. Perman?
I think it's wrong to give these, uh, money for affordable housing off of these, uh, people that certainly are not, didn't have enough money to be able to have a house and you're gonna find that they're not gonna live there. In the meantime, you're asking the boys that they had to give up their raise so that you can do your free spending like this. It's assassinate the liberals and, uh, and the conservatives are alike. They all like to spend people's monies. You don't bother spend, uh, bother, anyway, the liberals, let's see, conservatives take them from the public sector and they, uh, they cut, uh, they cut the government. And anyway, they both tried to give it in a certain way, the, both the liberals and the, uh, and the conservatives and they all seem to want to give money over to the people over there who should have been able to save their own money and then they could have these housing. We can't give, keep on giving money for these people. We keep on hearing about how you give houses to these people who clearly can't afford these houses and then later on these are houses are foreclosed and then they're homeless and then it just makes the idea more tragic. Um, you can't, uh, the reason why they didn't get the loans in the first place 'cause they knew that they couldn't pay for them. So this is wrong, what you're doing and in the meantime, you're taking out of the back so the city employees who have to keep on giving concession, concessions and concessions. In the meantime, you're overspending all this, um, you're overspending everybody's money and using it for all these areas so that you can look good, so that they can vote you all back, back in and for the ones who are running for mayor, you're doing it so that you can become mayor. You need to be bonded. You should be bonded when you're running for, uh, and stop giving up all, giving your freebies. You're getting way too many freebies and you're making a salary, you don't need anything else.
Thank you, Rick Nightingale.
Thank you. Um, I don't understand this. I mean, the city is supposed to be broke and so forth. I really feel sorry for these, the people, but hey, people, this is what you voted on. There is a council that you voted on. There is the state and the government that you voted on. It's their fault we're in the toilet. You can't keep giving everything away and now you wanna borrow $3.7 million to turn around and give housing to 40 people. Borrow. Nobody has the money in the bank, but borrow. What's, I mean, when you gonna learn? That you're gonna borrow to turn around and give something to somebody else where us law-abiding citizens that pay our taxes, that we're not getting our due of what we're paying for, but you wanna borrow to do, to give money away? I mean, this is what you call family, you know, like when you run into a problem, the family helps you. But no, you think that, everybody, come on down, well, here we go, sanctuary city, come on down. I mean, I'm sorry, truthfully, it sounds very, this is you guys' fault and I don't really care 'cause this don't affect me. I'm really sorry to say that, but I invested my money, I was in the union, my wife was, and we're doing just fine because we plan for the future. We sacrificed for the future in our younger years. But no, the city and our government keep saying, and Obama keeps saying, oh, we're gonna take care of you. We're the government. Just lean on our shoulders and vote for us again. This is what you ended up with.
Thank you very much. Next and last speaker on 54 is Zuma Dog. Okay, we have Councilmember Cadenas on the queue and Councilwoman Garcetti.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank the California Community Foundation for stepping up and offering this opportunity to help the city retain itself in first position, to protect the 40 families that are already living in this complex and I ask for your eye vote.
Councilwoman Garcetti.
Thank you and thank you, Mr. Chair and, and Mr. President. Just very briefly, this, from folks who might be tuning in and have just listened to public comment, there might be some misunderstandings about what this is fundamentally. These are 40 families who are there who are no fault of their own, are the innocent victims of a builder who has defaulted and left the country and other issues with this builder. This allows us to preserve through a loan and be repaid back just as that builder would have been, so no loss to our city's funds. The affordable housing that keeps these 40 hard-working families in a home. Last thing and the most expensive thing for all of us, it would be to take innocent victims and for folks, some of the folks who spoke in public comment, if you ever get sick, if you ever happen to live in an apartment where somebody forecloses but you're still paying your rent, I would hope that you have a government that stands up and represents you and keeps you in those homes and that's what we're doing here today. I ask for your support.
Okay, see no one else on the queue? Let's open the row, close the row, tally the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, what's in front of us?
Uh, Mr. President, that takes counsel to items called special. That would be item number one, call special for cards.
Okay, item number one. For cards, we have with us Sean Murphy, John Walsh and Arnold Sacks.
Yes, item number one, I'm for, thank you.
Okay, John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. When I was up here last time, I showed you my website and then someone in the room zapped and unlocked my computer and hacked me. Okay, that's why it went off like that. I am now speaking very, very kindly of business improvement districts because we went to the LAPD about a crack house in our neighborhood. Actually, it was on Yucca and Argyle and it was a huge six-story building. The police did not a damn thing, LAPD. We went to Garcetti, not a damn thing. When we went to the Hollywood BID, they came in and they pressured the LAPD and we got rid of the crack house at Yucca and Argyle. That's what happens when you have non-political people running things. HollywoodHighlands.org, find out who the adulterer is among the Hollywood hopefuls. Come to my website.
Mr. President is not talking about this item. Arnold Sacks?
Arnold Sacks, another business improvement district. This one operating with the consent of the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce. Now, the last speaker mentioned a Hollywood bid. Did he talk to the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce? Do they actually operate that bid? And you have an item on the agenda for Little Tokyo. Is there a Little Tokyo Chamber of Commerce? But they're not operating that bid. So, because the question here is, these parties that operate the bids, that manage the funding, those are for-profit companies. They're not nonprofits. So how much, because there's a question of spending expenses. There was a discussion about the downtown business improvement bid, that they spent like 66% of their funds on services, which meant they spent 34% of their funding on salaries and administration. And a pure nonprofit, if you wanna be talking about getting the best bang for your buck, is about 12% of their funding, maybe even less, on administration. So I'm wondering, with the Chamber of Commerce spending 12% of their funding on administration, why then, like item number two, do you have Little Tokyo Business Improvement District, which is not Little, it's L I L, Tokyo Business Improvement District? Sounds alike, but it's different. So how much are they spending on their administration? There was, what was it? I, I'm sorry, I don't have the funding, but next time you have a business improvement district, I'll have the numbers available. But how much is spent in administration by these for-profits when the Chamber of Commerce could do just as good a job and not be, not, and be a, be a nonprofit?
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing no more cards. Let's open the row, close the row, tally the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay. Next item?
Item three, call special for cards.
Okay, I have Zuma Dog and Arminus Nujian.
Yeah, right here. Now, I'd like to talk about top news with the FBI. Now, this might be pretty boring to the people at home, but you know who it's not boring to? The FBI. Because we're talking about building and safety and I say that you should release this and I'm looking for a no vote because I know council does not want to be complicit in a racketeering fraud scheme that is the Building and Safety Department that is under FBI investigation. Things like bribe-taking. So it's possible that this person is here today because they didn't give the proper bribe that is also centered in Koreatown and now that Sam N is in CD14, also CD14. Secondly, the city lost a court ruling in Superior Court in October of 2011 that stated that the city was illegally fining, feeing, putting liens onto properties and that it needs to stop. But however, under Carmen Tutanich, who is a mere facilitator of the L.A. Rico mafia that has pilfering and taking and stealing everything from the city, he's not doing anything about it. So I'm here to say, release this property because, oh, and this talks about asbestos and we need to talk about building and safety because we never got to the bottom of Andrew Edelman. So let me just say that I think, first of all, I think what Andrew Edelman came across it is about asbestos, Deion O'Connell. I think what happened was Building and Safety's Andrew Edelman discovered that pension money was being invested into projects that had asbestos and they couldn't get the permits to do the building. So the city council took him out of the pub crawl and he got bamboozled and how come he's still getting a pension and no files were...
Please lower your volume, sir.
Yes. So I'd like to say the top story, this is about asbestos and they're having a lien placed on him and I'd like to go on record as saying that Andrew Edelman was staying in one of these lofts and he discovered there were asbestos and the mayor got in a real hook because he had CIM pension money into a project...
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, FBI.
Armenia Nujian? Armenian Nujian, please.
Respectable City Councilmember, here's Phil Angelos. Actually, I give my voice, you know, to endorse resolution number three because the resolution actually is a report of accountability and confirmation of lien, and it covers, proposes to cover cost of asbestos monitoring and removal of asbestos, demolition and fencing overload at 4521 West Melbourne Avenue. And I believe that asbestos monitoring should become a permanent program, pilot program, to create pilot program for asbestos monitoring and removal of asbestos. As many people in this city, thousands of Angelinos, they just suffer from the wasteful effects of asbestos at their health, including mental and physical health, you know, and deteriorating effect of asbestos in paint, you know, should be monitored on a pilot program on a permanent basis and ask city council members to adopt a resolution in order to make asbestos monitoring a permanent, you know, program, in order to fund this program to, you know, to buy equipment, to buy asbestos monitoring sensors and stuff like that. So when people would know how much asbestos inside their walls or inside their paint, you know, normally, we're supposed to also make, adopt a resolution, I believe that City Councilmembers should adopt a resolution in order to prohibit any material that contains asbestos for future construction, constructing kind of building, constructing housing, so that asbestos wouldn't become part of our problems, you know? So asbestos would be excluded from the city building contractor materials, construction material list, you know? So building companies won't buy any material that contain asbestos. And such a resolution should be passed and the city government should make it fair share to fight asbestos use.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. On number three.
Fallow councilmembers, City of Los Angeles, what are the costs of asbestos monitoring? Is there such a monitoring that the city has invested its time? It's a question we would like to know. So, Mr. Reyes, is there such a clean way of removing and protecting the citizens, the civilians within our communities from asbestos? I would like to know. Who's the expert here to give us facts? Who's here to say that they're the experts when it comes to the science of what asbestos will do to not just our health, but to the welfare of our communities if it is exposed by the destruction and removal of it? I would like to know. And when I vote for the reelection or during the election for William Rodriguez Morris... And when I vote for the reelection or during the election for William Rodriguez Morris, I'm going to ask Mr. Morris, if he becomes our next neighbor, will you, Mr. Morris, tell me in District One how we can protect the citizens within our bordering district lines from asbestos?
Mr. President, I don't believe he's talking about item three.
I am on item three, City Attorney. But if I go talk about other items of what Mr. Tucanich, Carmen, has not done to protect our rights in our communities, then I'm off topic. So let's go back and consider what we must do in discussion about asbestos. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one on the queue, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, next item, Madam Clerk.
Item four, call special for cards.
We have with us Sean Murphy and Matt Dowd.
Yes, I'm against, yes, I'm against this, against this one. It's bad for the city.
Thank you. Matt Dowd? Is Matt Dowd here? Item number four.
All right, thank you, just dropped the federal evidence for a second. Kitties, all the, all the, all the people in the room, young children, old, or whatever, let me tell you, what they've been trying to say here is that the city of Los Angeles conducts these operations where they, they, they write tickets and they, they just, they basically, I've got a bunch of them here, it's, it's just a process, and then they ignore you, the councilman won't even talk to you, you know, the councilman of the district. And, and here, you know, and so this is what's happening right across the board, and the federal authorities have already issued an injunction, in my case, against Tom Labonge and his permit system, and there's been court rulings against these building and safety liens. Mr. City Attorney, I think I just scraped in under the tangent clock, or whatever it is you run here, that we also sued in federal court, I want everybody to know, the Ninth Circuit won't be pussy-whipped if you bring these building and safety liens to them. So you sue the city, you're entitled to your free expression under the First Amendment, so you can write what they said in the lawsuit. If, if, if some building and safety inspector said you can go to hell, or why don't you fuck yourself, or anything, you can write that.
Hey, you need to watch your language, sir, your time is up. You are disrupting the meeting with your language, sir, that's enough. Cut off his mic, that's it. Sit down, Mr. Dowd. The language is offensive, disrupting the meeting. Please escort him out. Seeing no one else on the queue? Let's open the roll.
Actually, for the record, he's still disrupting the meeting. Don't take the vote until he's done.
Okay, he's still disrupting the meeting, he's been escorted out. Councilman Glenn?
If I could ask the City Attorney about the, what we can do on these disruptions, if we can, they still have the option to, to ban any individuals or not? Okay.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item.
Item five, call special for cards.
Zuma Dogg, please come forward.
Yes, I need the FBI to please get involved immediately. Please contact Carmen Tucanich. He talks about that he likes to work with the feds. Now let's talk about something really important, building and safety. The city sits here like a bunch of phonies and pretends like they want to keep people in homes, but what has it been discovered in court? That they have been illegally fining people, property owners, and putting illegal liens and illegally putting people in rent escrow, and then instructing tenants how to stay in rent escrow by damaging properties, and then also the FBI has been investigating this city hall and the Building and Safety Department for bribe-taking. So what happens is between the bribes and between the fees and the fines and the liens, and by the way, the liens are many times erroneous, and then you can't get out of the erroneous lien because the city says, oh, they sent out the messages late, and then you miss your hearing, and then you lose the property. So to repeat, the city pretends like they want to keep people in homes, but it is so bad. I want everybody to know that's watching, the biggest issue in the city is that it's become such a corrupt racket regarding housing and building and safety that Barack Obama sent FBI from Washington because the LA Wilshire District has been infiltrated by the mafia. So if Barack Obama is sending authorities from Washington to investigate Building and Safety Department for liens being placed like this one right here, I think you should probably vote no. But the thing is that the people are losing homes, because when you illegally fee, illegally fine, illegally put them in rent escrow, illegally do all of this, well then, the property owner loses the home and the property that is housing the people. So you're really all full of S., aren't you? FBI, 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 please come here, FBI.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. No speakers in the queue on this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item.
Item six, call special for cards.
In fact, that's Zuma Dogg again, if you please come forward for item six.
Yes, and I am dedicating all my
Mr. President, he has one minute left.
And I am, and I am dedicating all my time to the building and safety issue, because you can't keep people in homes. People can't do business if you have the mafia, if you have the hardcore Rico mafia that has seized the LA City Council members, and if you have inspectors taking bribes, and it centers a lot in Herb Weston's district, and Jose Weisar's district, and Tony Cardness' district, and a lot of the districts. Why? Why does the FBI have to be involved for a simple thing like inspecting a building property? People are losing homes, and you know, there's a lot of talk right now, hey, I want everyone to stop talking right now, Bernard Parks. Mike Hernandez, oh my God, Mike Hernandez is talking, he's part of the Rico mafia.
Stay on the subject, stay on the subject.
Okay, here's the subject.
Stay on the subject, and don't yell.
The subject is the FBI is investigating for building and safety in Herb Weston's district over Sam N., and you have drug cartel in your district that got busted first.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Corretts.
I just have a question. I know he's on the most broadly tangential element of, of the subject. Could we have this guy dealt with? I can't even speak.
Zuma Dogg, don't disrupt the meeting. You're disrupting the meeting again. Mr. Corretts.
Is there some way to deal with these routine items like liens and have people actually speak to the specifics of the lien rather than use it as another two minutes of public comment? Not dealing with whatever he said in the content, but it had nothing to do with a lien to clean a property. Can we be tighter on our requirements so we don't add an extra 30 minutes of general comment that has nothing to do with the items?
In fact, Mr. Corretts, what I will do, this is, I think this, I think you raise a good point, and I'll have a discussion with the City Attorney's Office, just to kind of get a feel for the flexibility that we have. Just like all of the members here, we would like to see the meetings move more efficiently without these outbursts. So with that said, on this item, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That brings us to what?
Item seven, call special for cards.
You indicated that Mr. Dogg is out of time, so we have Wayne Spindler and Gary, and I just cannot, I don't even want to try to pronounce your last name, Gary, if you could please come forward. Yeah, so Gary, you're next. Okay, Mr. Spindler?
And regards to Mr. Dogg, if he were here.
Speak to the item.
It's just a
Speak to the item.
Right, but a bark is another language.
Speak to the item.
Okay. Again, we, the taxpayers, apologize to Councilman Corretts for delaying the stealing. I know it's hard, but let's look at CD nine, a lien for $16,886.88. Now, if I were to find a request in the file of how they came up with that total objectively, I bet there wouldn't be any paperwork at all. How do you, how do you come up with that? How much goes to labor? Gasoline costs? Materials? We don't know. Vote no on number seven.
Gary, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good morning, my name is Gary Petruska. I'm with Pacific Funding Group. I'm here on behalf of the 5900 Hoover lien. I acknowledge that it's there, I'm party to it, and I'm kind of frustrated from the standpoint that this is a property that I, as a lender, have lent on. I realize it's a legal issue, we dealt with this issue with bogus bankruptcies. I'm now dealing with Alliance Bank slash CBT, and I would love to get going and fix the property and do something to bring some value back to the city. The problem is, I've got issues with California Bank and Trust, not willing to sign off and give us the trustee's deed upon sale rights to move forward. I don't know if there's anyone here who could help us with this, but I'd love to have some support from the council to basically get, or District Attorney or anyone else, to get us, someone on board to basically help me get this resolved. Thank you.
I will make a request that representative from that council district touch base with you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. But with, and staff, if you could make a reminder of that, in fact, Michael, if you could pass that on. Okay, with that said, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That brings us where?
Item eight, call special for cards.
Okay, that was called special by Matt Dowd, he's no longer here, no speakers in the queue, let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President, that item, request to receive and file that item in as much as a lien has been paid.
Okay, without objection then. Next item.
Item nine, call special for cards.
Okay, Matt Dowd, again, he's not, he is not in the chambers. If I could call Jarrett White forward, please. Mr. White, please go ahead.
Good morning, counsel. I'd just like to say that on the property of 4748 North Burnett, we have a determination letter that states that we were not allowed to touch any significant trees. We warned the council that we may have an issue with one of the trees at, at some time, and of course, one day we did, we had a tree that actually fell into the street. I'm assuming that the city had cleaned that up, and they're actually now wanting to place a lien for $1,932 on our property, but we've never received any correspondence for that, and we'd like to have the opportunity to meet with our council district to try and resolve this matter without having a lien on the property.
Thank you, sir. No speakers on the queue, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That brings us to what item?
Item ten, call special for cards.
Item ten was called special by Matt Dowd, he's no longer in the council chambers. On that item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote, next.
Thirteen eyes.
And next?
Item twelve, call special for cards.
Okay, on item twelve, that was called special by Zuma Dogg, he's no longer in the room, or is he in the room? Okay, so then, on that item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay. Now, I, I believe that item fourteen is next, but Mr. Rosendahl, we have, I think, some items here that can go quickly, and, but I was just saying, on, I'm going to just bypass fourteen for a minute or two. So if we skip item fourteen, that brings us to seventeen. It brings us to what?
Item twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Called special by Councilman Buscagno.
Okay, then, Mr. Buscagno, and then if we could take up Mr. Cardness's item, which I believe is twenty-nine. So now, Mr. Buscagno, it's you.
Thank you, if I can have members from Housing Authority come to the table, please. Welcome, please introduce yourselves.
My name is Larry Goins, I'm here for Mr. Guthrie, gives his apologies, he had a previous engagement, I'm the Development Services Director.
My name is John King, the Director of the Planning Department for the Housing Authority of the City of LA.
Thank you, colleagues, this is an important issue involving my Watts community, specifically the Jordan Downs development. I had an opportunity to spend the night with Doretha Perkins and her family last month, it was quite an experience, a lot of good people in Jordan Downs, amazing community, and it's great to see Jordan Downs moving forward with the development. I just wanted, if you can, please share with us and my colleagues, the colleagues, the status of the master development negotiations at this time, please.
I'd be happy to talk about that, it is negotiation, so I won't get into the details, but I'm excited to share that we've began negotiations several weeks ago. We had a face-to-face meeting with many of the master developers team on Friday, it was an exciting and very, very successful meeting. We've all committed to turning our negotiations around quickly so we can get the development going quickly. We would, you know, hope in the next month or two to have the, the agreement completed and ready for approval by our board.
Great, I was, in, in spending the, the time with the residents at Jordan Downs, their concerns, of course, were during the, the construction phase and the displacement. Can you just share with my colleagues and the community's concerns about just that, that specific issue? Oh, John, if you want to.
John, you want to talk to that?
Yes, I, I think the beautiful thing about this project is because of the vacant parcel of land that the Housing Authority was able to purchase, it really allows us to build first and thereby not having to displace many residents. On a parallel track with that, we're also looking at purchasing homes in the surrounding community and kind of broadening the base of Jordan Downs, and so that's another exciting point where we're improving the quality of homes in the community by purchasing and rehabbing them, also with the vacant parcel that exists there within Jordan Downs.
Great, I just wanted to thank you for taking the time, this short presentation, and look forward to moving forward quicker, hopefully faster than normal, but the, the residents of Jordan Down are so looking forward to this development, and John, do you want a couple of things?
Yeah, I just wanted to, for the record, note that on a parallel track, again, with this project, is our human capital plan, where we're investing this project is our human capital plan, where we're investing in the families of Jordan Downs. We have brought on a nonprofit partner, Shields for Families, that is doing comprehensive case management and working with our families to help move them towards self-sufficiency. So I think that's very important to note, that this is not just a bricks and mortar project, it's also a human capital development program.
Also, I understand some, possibly some commercial development as well?
Absolutely. Yes.
Outstanding. So again, this is a development that's so needed to move forward, and the residents, and the time I spent with the residents in Jordan Downs, they're all looking forward to it, especially the kids, in looking at the maps and the layout to know that they're gonna have some youth facilities and community building, community centers as well. So we're all looking forward to it, and thank you so much for your time and your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscagino. No cards on the queue, in the queue, or no speakers in the queue. Let's open up the roll. Let's close the roll. Let's tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Cardness, I think 29 should be next, Madam Clerk?
Yes. 29, called special by Councilwoman Cardness, and amended motion 29A has been circulated.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted, I called it special, we needed to make sure that the CIO report got distributed, the substitute CIO report, and it has been distributed to the council members. I just wanted to ask for an aye vote, as when you read the report, it is in order. Thank you.
Okay. Then on that item, what, we have cards? Arnold Sacks, followed by Wayne Spindler. They're not here. Wayne is. I see Wayne.
Lot of money. Only one speaker on such a vast amount of tens of millions of dollars. Former Mayor Reardon on KABC tonight, on the Peter Tilden Show, is going to show, or state that by 2014, the city's gonna be bankrupt, and in a, before a bankruptcy court, if his projections are correct. And we see here, and number two, there's $21,200,000 on one part of it. Another part of it has $15 million. Another part of it, $800,000. Let's not forget the $21,200,000 on seven projects or 723 units. $13,383,000 on Run Two and Three. And what's this all going to? How about all those families on the freeways you see every day killing themselves driving to and from work? How much of that money goes to those families for their gas, for their housing? Not a nickel. This money came from somewhere. We all know where it came from. Property taxes. Down the drain. And then when you use this money for these purposes and you go broke, what do you do next? Special assessment districts, and then ballot measures for more taxes, and more taxes. And that's why you're driving the middle class out of the Los Angeles city limits, because you're out of control. This money, since the city is going into technical bankruptcy, you cannot be doing this, but you're gonna go ahead and vote yes on it. But let it be stated that this is almost $50 million, and the city does need that money desperately. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is that on this item? Okay, Rick Nightingale in the Valley?
Yes, thank you. I'll tell you, just like the Speaker in front of me, I mean, what's it gonna take for you people to just realize that you don't have any more money? I mean, I just don't understand it, that you vote on all this different stuff, and I mean, the decimals just go, keeps going, the zeros and the zeros and the zeros, that it's just unboggling how much money that there is, and you don't have any idea where it's coming from, that you think that the good little fairy back here is gonna come and gonna, gonna give you some more money, that Obama's gonna get, bail you out, and Brown's gonna bail you out? But now, even like right now, they want this parcel tax for us to be paying for, and for the school board and that. I mean, when is it gonna be enough? That you people don't try to cut back. You people are so liberal up there that you think everybody should have a house and so forth, that you just, I never hear anybody trying to budget anything. It's just that, yeah, well, we'll just vote on that and we'll find the money someplace. But it's not coming. And you people haven't gotten the word yet. It's just not coming. And we're just talking here. The only way it's gonna happen is the city and the state is gonna go bankrupt. I mean, you watch even CNN and rally, that it's coming for you people, because it's the only way it's gonna work. You people are so liberal and wanna give so much away that there's no other way that this possibly could happen until you are, it's just flat-ass bankrupt where you can't borrow another dollar from a bank. That's the only way it's gonna happen. You just haven't learned.
Thank you. Thank you. Donna Peirman and Marian Fogler in the Valley?
Which one? Donna Peirman first, or Marian Fogler?
Both of you.
Oh.
So just go, you're there.
Okay, yeah, okay. I see this, we're, Broadway's spending a lot of money. Look at these projects, if anybody would see this, and these homeless housing projects. Well, over this, we have $21,200,000, I think it's, or is it 21 billion? 21, 200, 000, 000, 000. That's a lot of money for one, two, three, four, five, six projects. And we don't, we don't have money like this, and you're spending, spend all this money for these homeless areas, and we don't even know how long these people are gonna be living in these areas like this, when the, all of a sudden, when all these rents are gonna have to go up later on, and then these people probably won't be the same people on here. And you're spending way too much on these things. And HDZIL, Taylor Guard, 15094990.00. Look at all this money that you're spending on this. No wonder that our city is going broke. You know, you think you just throw a lot of money in one area, that that's gonna solve all the problems.
No, they should be bonded for it.
They should be bonded for it, and then you, then you spend the problem, you spend it if there's any problem. River Rock, receipt of 301,59.
Politicians should be paying for this.
Politicians should be paying for this. I agree with her on the, 100% spent, especially if anything goes wrong. You put your neck out on for this thing, and if anything goes wrong and these people don't pay for it, let's have the politicians pay for it, since you wanted it so badly. And don't turn around and put it on everyone else's city to pay for it. I know things are gonna go wrong, and I know they're not gonna pay it, and I don't believe they're gonna pay back on that other thing either, Mr. Garcetti. People are not gonna pay it back.
Thank you. Ms. Fogler?
Bottom line, folks, we need to hold these officials here accountable for this by making them pay for it. We should go after restitution here, taxpayers and the city workers. The unions need to bail out themselves from this bankruptcy fiasco and take the reins back from the politicians here at City Hall and stop the charade by using our tax dollars and the city, and the hard workers who work here at the city, who are not gonna, they're trying to stop getting the pay rise, thanks to City Miguel, who's working for them. And they should be, the whole city council here, the whole horseshoe, should pay for this, this $21 million to all these costly home, affordable housing for these people. You wanna pay, you wanna spend it? You pay for it, not the taxpayers. It should go to the vote of the people, to put it on the ballot, to take it away and put it in your liability. We should be bonding you. You should be liable for all this cost. How dare you run for city, city government, or state government, or federal government, Obama and all of them? That should be bonded and pay for all this debt. Not the taxpayers, not the workers. Get off our backs. You're responsible for this cost. We need to hold you accountable. You voters, vote these turkeys in. You got what you got. You got wasters, collect, all they do is collect and spend. They don't care how they get it, where they get it, they don't care, but they wanna spend it on these frivolous things, these home things, and all they care about is bankrupting the rest of everybody else, but having money for themselves. We need high time, make them accountable, even put them in jail. This is white collar crime. This is the same thing with the federal, with the savings and loans and the stock market. This is criminal behavior. You need to put a stop to this now.
Thank you. Mr. Cardness?
Thank you very much. I think it's important for the public to understand that what we're talking about here is not a general fund item. Some of the people made comments as though we're spending general fund money that competes with policing or libraries, et cetera, but what this is, is housing dollars that are categorical funds, and many of the funds that are actually synergy between the funds that the federal government gives us, the state gives us, and there's no question that the City of Los Angeles has housing challenges of every kind. So I just wanted to make sure for the record that people understand that these are not funds that, that seem to be described by some of the people making comment, that this is the same funds that go to the General Fund of Los Angeles. The General Fund handles everything from libraries to police to fire, et cetera. These funds are categorically and specifically for housing, and we are making sure that we're responsibly using them for housing. Thank you.
Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to echo Mr. Cardness's thoughts. You know, sometimes I think members of the public who watch our meetings might get the wrong impression, because we have a number of speakers who come up, they're repeat customers, and it's their right, and they're absolutely entitled to say whatever they wanna say from those microphones, even when it's utter nonsense. And so I need to, you know, sort of apologize, I think, to the members of the public who listen to that nonsense sometimes. This is a case in point. The funds that are in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund are federal funds, which are set aside specifically for affordable housing. They can't be used for any other general fund purpose. They don't come from the general fund. They're not subsidized by the general fund. They don't supplant any other city services. They're specifically designed for housing projects exactly like the important, high-quality projects that are at issue in this item. The Day Street Project, that is part of this item, is an important project in Sunland de Hunger that my constituents have been desperately seeking to have built for a very long time, because they know that when that facility is built, it's going to significantly improve the problem of homelessness that they're facing right now. That's degrading quality of life for my constituents right now. When my constituents and their children are going to the park and having to deal with the homeless population there, when they're going and seeing the homeless living in the wash, they know that the solution to that is having supportive housing, like the Day Street Project that's being funded by this, this item. So this is absolutely a critically important use of federal funds to help the quality of life for all Angelenos, not just the people who are gonna live here, but all Angelenos. So I respectfully request your aye vote on this matter.
Thank you. Okay, with that said, on this item, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Fourth with?
And, Mr. President, for the record, that item is adopted as amended.
All righty. That brings us to which item?
Item 37, call special for cards.
Mr. John Wash and Arnold Sacks. John Wash, if you please, come forward. And I do not see Mr. Sacks.
John Wash blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, new post up. You know, the media missed the story at the L.A. Marathon, because the Ethiopian woman who won did not come in in first place. For the women, she came in first place over all the men. There has never been a moment like this in history, where a woman beat every man in the world that counted in this spot. Now, I spent two years in Ethiopia, so I know a little bit about Ethiopian women. Now, she received an extra $100,000. I didn't see that on television for beating a man. No woman has ever beat a man in any sport, and she came in two hours and 23 minutes faster than the man, who was also African. And the reason the story didn't appear is because of prejudice. If it had been a blonde woman, you would have seen the story. I'm telling you, going back to the great marathon runners, Ababa M'Kila. And instantly, not only did she finish first in this race, but she finished first, number four in the history. It was the fourth fastest finish in the history of this marathon. And I would like to say, I like to finish by addressing you in the Umharic language. Tonight's the link. Indemnacu. Un, on. We are on. I'm telling you. Leba och. Shifta och. Fanafent och. Anybody who speaks, speaks Umharic. Okay, Hollywood, no, no. I use the word for gay. That's not a, an attack, is it? Is it a word? Fanafent. That is the word for, we are, what I said was that we had thieves and crooks and city gangs.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, on this item? Let us, let's, let's open the roll. Let's close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next?
Item 45, call special for cards.
Mr. Zuma Dogg, he's not here. Arnold Sacks, not here. Wayne Spindler is here. Elsa Barnett, I believe it is, and Arminak Norjanian. Please come forward.
All right. Here we got street banners. This is such an important thing, the Nickelodeon Kids' Choice Awards. That's more important than President's Day. That's surely more important than putting up banners for Caesar Chavez Holiday or Jackie Robinson Day. Yes, we've resorted ourselves and lowered ourselves to putting up on public property street banners for the Nickelodeon Kids' Choice Awards. Yes, the Nickelodeon Kids' Choice Awards is far more important than the Academy Awards or the L.A. Marathon, or urging people to vote in the coming elections. So once again, it's the fall, the new Roman Empire, the City of Los Angeles is slowly and quickly descending upon us. Thank you.
Thanks. Next?
Good morning, respect to City Council members. Dear fellow Angelenos, actually, I want to oppose with Resolution 45. And I speak in a position with Resolution 45, because this Resolution 45 is a perfect getaway to a wealthy. It's a kind of most irresponsible resolution I have so far seen today, because it's a resort to install with city banners of Nickelodeon Kids' Choice Awards. Well, Nickelodeon is a company, it's a private entertainment company, it's a corporation, and I believe should afford doing its own, installing the street banners at its own expenses, not at the expense of the City of Los Angeles. And I believe that council members, Perry and Park, mistaken the city coffers, where the pockets of those corporations, Nickelodeon, Nickelodeon Corporation, that's actually entertainment industry, business, which has sufficient resources to install all street banners at its own expenses. And I believe in Portland City Funds, which is called, which actually may be a case, again, which would represent in Portland City Funds, as we... which represent in Bezzel City Funds, because City Fund being embezzled and being improperly spent on a kind of, on doing the work of a private business. And actually, I believe that I asked City Council members to vote against this resolution, to strike it down because this is in Bezzel City Fund. This is most highness, you know, resolution I ever seen yet because this one gives away private corporation with Nickelodeon or something, the right to spend City Funds with outrage, you know, because it's actually, doesn't divide the city pockets from pockets of corporation, Nickelodeon, private company. It's a private outfit, which should do.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have a Ms. Barnett? It doesn't appear that we do. So on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next.
Item fifty-one, call special for cards.
Mr. John Walsh, please, please come forward.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. You know, there aren't many people still alive that knew Jackie Robinson as a friend. They may have seen him, but they didn't know him as a friend. In fact, Jackie Robinson and I had a mutual friend, and that's Bob Bartlett. I hope you all know Bob Bartlett. He was the mayor of a city in the San Gabriel Valley, and he sits on a number of boards. He's a good friend of mine, and he was a good friend of Jackie Robinson's brother, who only died just a few years ago, although Jackie died almost a half a century ago. And I would ask you, next time, when you're going to have the Jackie Robinson Day, to invite Mr. Bartlett because Mr. Bartlett knows exactly the full story and can tell us up close and personal. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, we have Wayne Al Kedreski.
That's the name that Eric Garcetti gave me, but that was about another thing. Anyway, the Jackie Robinson Holiday is, I think, one of the best things you could do for the city because the Dodgers are such an integral and important part of the city, and it's being, this franchise is being just decimated and slandered by the way that one Frank McCourt has done to this club, trying to keep the parking lots and sell the team. Jackie Robinson, if he was alive today, would absolutely come to this meeting. He'd be out there showing his outrage and disgust. But the Dodgers today don't really have any of the old timers that brought the team here to fight for the tradition. So I would say on April 11th, it's high time that Frank McCourt give up total ownership of this baseball team and give it new ownership. Get him the hell out of Los Angeles and out of the Dodgers. Do it for the memory of Jackie Robinson. So when you hold this day, Frank McCourt will not own a damn thing belonging to the Dodgers. Please do that. Thank you.
Okay. No more folk on the queue on that item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
What's the next item?
Mr. President, that takes you to item fourteen and thirty-six.
In fact, it's been requested that we take item forty-three. So let's do that. Next, you guys are, you're up. It's just your, your item's going to take a bit, and we wanted to get rid of some of these other things. Mr. Rosenthal.
Mr. Kretz and I, we just want to announce, Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry have left the Expo Board effectively as part of the process, and Mr. Kretz and I will serve. The Fifth District and the Eleventh District for Phase Two of Expo will be on the construction board. That will include us taking a definite commitment to the Sepovita exit, which will share with both Five and Eleven, and then the one I have, which will be the Bundy Olympic, and community members will participate with us. But the reality is, Phase One is just about done. Phase Two is just about to start. Our plan is to get it done by the end of 2015 so that we can actually have a light rail from downtown all the way to Santa Monica and take away some of the congestion we have. So we're going to ask for your support on putting Mr. Kretz and Mr. Rosenthal on the committee. Thank you.
Mr. Kretz, and I believe you'll be the last speaker on the queue.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank council members Parks and Perry for their service on this board through the period of Phase One and their good work for their constituents and for the city as a whole. It's just about finished, and we'll open soon in Culver City, and hopefully in the next couple of years, we'll go through CD Five and CD Eleven, reach Santa Monica, and be a great system. Councilmember Perry played a great leadership role on this. Councilmember Parks was instrumental in getting Foché Pedestrian Tunnel and the Trusdale Stop near USC through, and both created a project local jobs program that was successful. And so I want to commend the both for that, and also want to thank Councilmember Parks for giving me the chance as his alternate to attend several meetings as Phase Two issues came up more and more. And so I appreciate that and look forward to continuing to work with them as they will now be all our alternates, but as Phase One issues still come forward, we'll work closely with them as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kretz. No speakers on the queue.
Excuse me, Mr. President, I believe there's cards on this item.
And this item forty-three, correct? Mr. Walsh is the only card we have.
The red line.
Oh, wait, Mr. Walsh, I'm informed you don't have any more time, so I'll give you a minute. I'll give, I'll give you a minute. Go on, you have a minute.
HollywoodHighlands.org, find out about the adulterer in our midst. Not here, not in this room. HollywoodHighlands.org. The red line was the subway from hell, the Expo is the light rail from hell. When they hold the opening, it will be a partial opening because the full first segment is supposed to go to Culver City. They've screwed it up so bad, they're going to have an opening to La Cienega. That's not Culver City. The second segment, forget about. They don't have the money to build it. You just have the money to plan it. And this system is putting people in the hospital before it is even built. They had a big Expo wreck just yes, Sunday, and they haven't even opened it. The whole thing, and I want to say, when you built the Pasadena Line, you built it on the up and up. When you built the line to East L.A., you built it on the up and up. This Expo line, the ZEB line, is totally corrupt. You can do the job when you want to, and the whole line.
Thank you, thank you. No speakers on the queue. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now, I believe that brings us to item fourteen, Mr. Kretz.
If I would just ask that that item go fourth with?
Fourth with. Okay. I believe, Madam Clerk, that brings us to item fourteen.
Yes.
And we want to apologize for having you wait, but this is your time now. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Let's get a little motion in here and call on Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to ask the staff to come to the center table. It's item fourteen. This is a quasi-dudish item regarding an appeal. And if you could just describe what's in front of us, please identify yourself and brief the council. This is a formal public hearing to address the appellant's concerns.
Yes. Good morning, Council. My name is Mo Blorfreschan. I'm with the Department of Transportation Development Review Section, and this is an appeal from Mr. Dallinger, appealing our traffic assessment report of a proposed 875 student charter school project at 1905 Harmacost Avenue. The proposed project consists of converting the existing 49,885 square foot vacant warehouse building to house a new 875 student charter school, including 375 student middle school and 500 student high school with separate arrival and dismissal times. The high school class time will be from 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., while the middle school will operate from 8:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Based on the consultant traffic study, which we reviewed, the project is expected to create a net increase of 2,170 daily trips, an increase of 814 new, net new a.m. peak hour trip, and 508 new p.m. peak hours. And DOT determined that the proposed project will create significant traffic impact at nine of the 14 studied intersections. So in order to mitigate that, we imposed what we call a traffic management and monitoring program, this TMMP. The TMMP has to be prepared by the consultant for the project, and it has to be reviewed by DOT and city planning. Again, I think the appeal was that, from Mr. Dallinger's, but the TMMP was unattainable based on the number of students, and that's why we are here. Again, as I said, the only condition that we really put for the TMMP was for the carpool program, that they need to have a minimum vehicle occupancy of three students per Art Cassin study.
Can we change it from 875 to 750?
Yeah, and I think, yeah. By the way, at the PLUM hearing, we heard that the scope of project was actually reduced from 875 to 750, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and the school's going to bring in school buses to bring in the students. But the, as far as DOT concerns, the trip cap will remain the same, even with the 750 students.
So the bottom line is that, given your assessment, your analysis, and the proposed project, the current conditions with the added conditions of PLUM, you feel that the impacts have been mitigated sufficiently?
Yes. If, again, we are, the requirement is that the consultant has to come up with a TMMP plan for DOT review. And again, Art Cassin, who's the consultant for the, for Mr. Dallinger, had a couple of scenarios that they looked into, and based on his analysis, he indicated that these TMMP is unattainable. For us, it is not an unattainable goal, but it's an aggressive program. There's no doubt about that. So again, the comment that we're going to make is on a TMMP plan that the consultant's going to submit to us, which they have not done so yet.
Okay. So colleagues and Council President, it would behoove us to hear from the appellant since this item was not heard in PLUM Committee, that we allow the appellant to state his case. And of record, we have Mr. Timothy G. Dallinger, who is the appellant on this case, and I'd like to come to the microphone, identify yourself, and give us the reasons and your perspective on the appeal.
Hold on for the city attorney, but moment, please.
Before he begins, this is a reminder to the council members that this is a fair hearing matter requiring heightened attention to the speaker at the podium or to your monitors at your desks, and I believe a certain amount of time should be given to the appellant's greater than the other public commenters.
Okay. We can allow them five minutes at this stage to give us your appeal, and if you need more, we can give some flexibility, but let's hear for the reasons for your appeal.
Okay, and before we do that, we do have public comments cards, Mr. Reyes, which we'll call after they make their presentation. And as we get this started, I wanted to ask Mr. Cardness real quick, if you could. Mr. Cardness, introduce your special guest.
Thank you very much. While you gather your thoughts, I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce a visitor to the city of Los Angeles. She just finished going to a special, special mass at the downtown cathedral. She is the student. Her name is Alexis Victoria Garcia. She came all the way down from Santa Barbara as the only student from her school to be selected for her community service at her Christian school. So I just wanted to embarrass her a little bit and congratulate her in front of all of you.
Very good. And as long as you're doing schools, real quick, I have three great students, two from Princeton, Sebastian Wilder and Sylvia Lundgren, and also a great student from Cal State, Northridge, their special mentor, Mr. Monsieur Gonzalez Kimbrough. Stand up and be recognized there as interns on a summer break there. Thank you, young students. With that being said, Mr. Reyes, at this time, we're going to ask the clerk to put the clock at six minutes, just because it's twice there, and give the appellant the opportunity as directed by our city attorney. Mr. City Attorney, are you prepared? He's prepared. Here we go. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Timothy Dallinger. I'm the appellant in this matter, and I'd like to introduce my traffic consultant, Arthur Kassan, who will speak first.
Good morning, or afternoon. By its own actions, after the planning commission hearing, the school has made a tacit admission that its originally proposed transportation program would be infeasible and ineffective. And in an effort to counteract that, they have recently proposed a completely new program, including a 15% reduction in the student enrollment limit, providing four school buses, when the original proposal was emphatic that there would be no school buses, and keeping 20% of the students on campus until 6:00 p.m., when the original limit for all students to be on campus was 3:45 p.m. None of those actions were motivated by comments from DOT. That department had blessed the original proposal without recognizing that it was mathematically impossible to implement. The school's actions were a result of the persistent comments and questions that came from the neighborhood. It was left to the neighbors to be the watchdogs over the traffic impacts and mitigations in this case. Now we have a totally new school proposal that has not been reviewed by the city planning commission and has not been evaluated for traffic impacts by DOT. DOT has not evaluated the school busing of 225 to 240 students, nor has DOT evaluated the impacts of keeping 150 students on campus after dismissal until 6:00 p.m. or later. According to SEQA guidelines, quote, "If a mitigation measure would cause one or more significant effects in addition to those that would be caused by the project as proposed, the effects of the mitigation measure shall be discussed." So far, the studies of the school's traffic impacts have been inadequate because neither the school's consultant nor DOT has disclosed, discussed, or evaluated the secondary impacts of the mitigation measures. The schools will pick up and drop off students at one to four collection centers, such as West Side Pavilion. What will be the impacts at or near those collection centers when 240 parents have to drive to and from the collection centers to transport their children? That is just a matter of moving the problem from one neighborhood near the school to other neighborhoods near the bus collection centers. Those substantial impacts have not been addressed by DOT. If 150 students will stay late until 6:00 p.m. every day and have to travel home during the congested commuter peak hours on the street network, what will be the impacts of as many as 150 parents' vehicles traveling to and from the school at that time? DOT's analysis of impacts for the original proposal ended at 3:45 and has not been extended into the commuter peak hours after the new program was proposed. And even with those new and evaluated, unevaluated measures, DOT has not evaluated the feasibility of the proposed carpool program. of the proposed carpool program. What is the school's response to those issues? They've requested that the council give them full approval of their proposal now, before the required environmental studies have even begun, and then they will study the potential impacts of the busing and the students staying until 6:00 p.m. The school's studies will be reviewed by DOT without any information being given to or reviewed by the neighbors. DOT is the agency that approved the original plan that was shown to be infeasible by the neighbors. The review of the impacts of the late-staying students could be begun tomorrow. Their engineer could count the traffic at study intersections during the appropriate hours, and the calculations of potential impacts could take place within two weeks from today. There's nothing preventing that study from going forward. Why isn't it going forward right now? We request that the traffic impact study be revised and expanded now to reflect the current school proposal, not the proposal that the school has completely discarded. Without an updated and more complete study as required by SEQA guidelines, the feasibility of the mitigation measures cannot be evaluated, and there's no proof that the significant impacts can be mitigated. Further, we request that DOT make the expanded study report available for review by the neighbors. The original report was kept secret from the neighbors until Councilman Rosendahl instructed DOT to make it available long after the planning commission hearing. Thank you very much.
You are being asked to sign a...
Could you state the name for the record?
Yes, Timothy Dallinger, the appellant in this matter, again. You're being this morning asked to sign a blank check. What you have in front of you is a totally incomplete record, and by way of demonstrating that, a letter from Mr. Rosendahl himself to Mr. De La Vega, the general manager of the Department of Transportation, on February 23rd, where Mr. Rosendahl said, "I want to express my deep concerns about DOT's analysis. Could you kindly answer the following questions? What quantitative analysis can DOT point to to support the traffic monitoring program? There's no quantitative analysis of carpooling for the site. Why was the professional critique of Art Casson dismissed? There's heavy reliance on three bus stops used by transportation planners and engineers, which are more than a quarter of a mile from the school." The bottom line is what you have in front of you is a program which has not been submitted to DOT in full.
Thank you. You have any needing, any concluding remarks necessary?
Yes, I would, I would just like to say, based on the incomplete record that you have in front of you, there's no possible way that you can reasonably and with due process approve the present report from DOT. Thank you.
Counselor Bunch?
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, I would like to have the staff come to the table, and if you can respond to some of the assertions that you felt is necessary, given the observations of the appellant?
As far as, again, DOT concerns, again, even with 750 students, as I indicated, there will be traffic impacts, so the trip cap, trip cap will still, is a requirement. Now, again, as far as having the DOT review, the new traffic study based on the new proposal, that's something that, I don't know, that's something that you have to decide, but again, that can still be analyzed as part of the TMMP program.
You were shaking, you were shaking your head to one of the statements. Can you, why are you responding to that?
The only one that I shake my head was, was when they indicated that DOT did not disclose the, the project, the actual report. That's the first time I heard about that. This is, of course, a public record. And once we sign the traffic assessment report, that's available for public to review.
And when was it made available?
The memo was signed November 30th.
I'm sorry, the date again?
The memo from, from us to city planning was signed on November 30th.
And at that point, it was a public document?
Right.
And that is made available to the public through different means?
If they ask for that, they will be available, right.
Okay. For the planning department, please introduce yourself.
Can I just add, that memo dated November 30th from the general manager of the Department of Transportation was in the city plan case file, and it was a revised assessment based on a revised traffic plan that was submitted by the applicant. The original memo from DOT regarding the traffic plan that was submitted by the applicant was published with the environmental document.
Okay. Anything else to add from the staff?
Jim Tokonago, city plan. Just to add also that the TMMP program that's required as part of the conditional use approval, before the planning department even signs off on, the final approval for the, the school, will need approval from the Department of Transportation on that TM and plan. So that's, that's how we are assured that whatever the school is proposing as far as mitigation measures, that it is implementable so that we are, we can sign off on the project.
Can you, TMMP, can you please?
Is the transportation, the mitigation program that there, that is to be submitted before we sign off on the conditional use permit.
It's a mitigation program you review before it is?
It's reviewed by the Department of Transportation, and once they are okay with it, then we, we will be able to sign off on the conditional use permit.
Does that address the notion of a blank check?
No, there are certain specifics, requirements in the TMM program that we are requiring, but we are not the transportation experts, so we do have, we rely on the Department of Transportation for their final approval. But they, they did include, at the Plum meeting, there were some changes made for, such as the shuttle buses. They did reduce the number of students, but these are all reductions in the project, and this is to implement the mitigation measures.
And also, I want to mention that the monitoring program is a, is a minimum five-year program. You know, it would start with 575 students first, first year, and it's going to go, the new proposal is 750 students, which happens on the third year. And the monitoring program starts from the year one. So again, if, at any time the TMMP is not met, they have to reduce enrollment. That's, that's a requirement that we have as part of the TMMP program. Also, as part of the TMMP, I guess there was another concern was with the queue, the traffic, because all the drop-off has to be onsite. So the other concern was that the queue would be intruding onto city streets. Again, as part of the TMMP program, they have to submit a plan that shows that all the queue would stay onsite.
So given these conditions, the review process from here on out, that eliminates, or at least addresses the notion that this is a blank check, that we are actually holding the applicant accountable for the impacts caused by the traffic?
Right.
Yes, and...
I need to hear an answer.
Okay. Yes, Jim Tokonago of the City Planning Department. Again, as part of the conditions of approval for the, the school itself, the planning department has imposed a one-year plan approval process after the year, after the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. In other words, during that first phase of the school's operation, we will require a plan approval. That means they'll have to come back to the planning department to show that they're in compliance with all the conditions.
So accountability will be assessed, will be determined based on that review?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how we ensure that, you know, in this case, one year is actually a very short period of time, that they are complying.
I want to make sure that's on the record.
It's on the record, it's in the conditions.
It's condition number 11 of the conditions provided by Plum.
Okay. Any other questions, my colleagues, on this matter?
At this time, there's no on the queue. We do have a public cards here, so if your staff wants to sit, Mr. Rosendahl, you're rising to speak?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question of the folks in the audience there. 36 is, is going to deal with the future and where the school is. 14 was an appeal here. There's some folks who filled out cards for both 14 and 36. If there are people here who just want to deal with 14, I'd like to give them one minute apiece, go up to 10 minutes, but I really want to spend the quality time on 36, talking about all the issues of...
Wait, wait, what's before us right now, Mr. City Attorney? Be very clear on this.
Yes.
Hold on a second, Mr. Rosendahl.
Sure.
This is a public hearing matter, directed on this issue.
Correct.
And I, I don't want to mix 36 with that, right, Mr. City Attorney?
That's right, separate.
Got it.
This is a, an appeal from the Department of Transportation, general manager's determination sustaining the supplemental traffic assessment report on this matter.
So this is all we're going to consider. We'll have to consider 36 when 36 comes up.
Correct.
Okay? Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
First question is, are there people that want to speak on 14?
I'm going to only consider this one right here at this time because of the advice of the city attorney.
That's fine.
Okay. That being said, we have some cards. Staff, if you want to sit at the front bench, on the staff cards here, what I have on these cards, the public comment cards, and we have them all in, sergeants, thank you for your help here. We have cards with not, not marked for or against. We have cards that are against, and cards that are for. I'm going to have a one-minute each comment from anyone who I call, and you could come up first. These are unmarked cards, no position, Lisa Zimba and Mr. Herman A. Are they here?
Councilman, this is Craig Lawson on behalf of New West Charter School. The supporters of the school who fill out cards either saying 14 or 36, I think, would like to speak on item 36, if that's okay with you.
That's okay, we'll hold the cards, okay? All righty, so here we have here on 14, excuse me, and Tracy Grant, that's also one of those as well. This is also those who are against the project on the proposal. If I could call them up. One-minute comment, Arthur Casman?
He spoke.
The attorney just spoke. You get a minute.
Thank you. Mr. Blofreschan misunderstood my comment about the traffic report. His report was made available, his November 30th report was made available, and, and that was very useful. But the traffic report that was prepared by the consultant to the school was not available until after the planning commission, and that report contained a great deal of information, which we found later to be useful in our comments and our analyses. So keeping the consultant's report in their files away from view by the neighbors should not have been an acceptable action, but that's what, what occurred. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to proceed as directed. If you would like me to split these cards, because usually they're 14 and 36, separate, but there are many together. So all who filled out cards, you're going to be called twice, because usually they fill out cards on both issues. But in this case, we have duplicate cards. Don't want to give anybody not an opportunity to speak. For those who are against the proposal that filled out a card, please stand in the queue. You get one minute right there. Anyone who filled out on 14, and if you want to speak again on 36, follow in the direction of you, Mr. City Attorney. Please state your name.
Hello, my name is Tina Gruen, and regarding this DOT report, I, I heard someone appear say that there will be queuing onsite, that that is required. However, the newest plan proposes that all of their buses let out on Armocost. This is contrary to everything that's been proposed for seven months. It's contrary to the DOT review. Now that they want to let the buses, which weren't talked about for six months, let the students out on the residential street that is not onsite, that's going to have a whole slew of other impacts that just haven't been considered. There is so much in this report that hasn't been adequately reviewed, and that has changed I do wish that you would uphold the appeal and invalidate the current DOT report, as it doesn't address the size or scope of the current proposal.
Thank you, Tina. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Ann Patel.
Thank you, Ann.
She mentioned before about no buses on Armocost, but actually it's Missouri Avenue that's being considered. I'm concerned about that there's really not an adequate way to enforce the TMMT at all, and I'm also questioning the, on the Plum report itself, it doesn't mention as Bundy Drive being specifically the street where everyone from New West would have to enter onto Missouri, not through the neighborhood. So I'm concerned about that. And also, the LA DOT has not addressed at all the summer, any kind of summer program is, it's, we've been kept in the dark about that, as we have until very recently on the after-school programs.
Thank you, Ann. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Sochi Gonzalez. I'm a member of the West Los Angeles Neighborhood Council. The council voted unanimously to reject the New West relocation and expansion, and one of the reasons was the traffic impacts, which we didn't feel were properly mitigated and addressed, and the diminishing of quality of life of the residents. I'd like to say that at their current location, they have a history of disregarding the business owner's complaints, and that they ignore their own traffic plan, which is posted on their website. This is a tremendous concern to us as they move forward and try to expand. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Ms. Gonzalez?
Marilyn Noes, West LA stakeholder. I would like to address that issue of enforceability. We have no, we residents have no contract with the school. The only thing we hear about enforceability is a parent, parent school contract. Who's supposed to monitor whether the carpools are, are being kept at the right level, or whether the buses are, you know, sufficiently carrying students, or, you know, if, if they're not in compliance, are, are the neighbors supposed to set up cameras and watch this? Is DOT going to come out? We don't have any mechanism for us to assure that we are not going to get the impacts that we believe we're going to have from this.
Thank you very much, Marilyn. Next.
Hi, my name's Susan Yamida, and I had addressed this question to New West but never got an answer, and so I was wondering how are they, how are they going to monitor people who are going to be parking in the OSH parking lot? Those are students, or parents who are going to be dropping their kids off a few blocks away from the school? Because all of these things will artificially reduce the number of trips that are counted at the school, so it's kind of, you know, not a real fair count if a traffic engineer's only hanging around the school and not counting all the trips that are going around all over the place. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Susan.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Maeda. I live directly across the street. So I observe the traffic flow and ebb every, every day and night. The one thing that hasn't really been taken into consideration is the gym. The people that go to this gym there, there, there's a parking lot that's right behind where the parking is going to be for the school, okay? And they're going in and out. The street across, directly from where I live, is, has people that go to the gym, and that's always packed, okay? So this is a whole nother area of contention that hasn't been looked into very carefully. Now, understand Bill's position on this, Brockton Avenue. I went to Brockton Avenue School. I went to Webster Junior High School. I went to University High School, public schools, okay? I got a good education. And this, this is going to be taken away from the public schools in the area if these kids are going down from Brockton, going down to New West Charter. All right? And I know they've made the argument, well, there are all these schools in the area already, okay? And that's the problem, there are too many schools in the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'm Mark Suzuki, and I live across from the proposed school site. I think it's kind of, not against schools, however, I don't think that having an after-school program, we're going to have more and more cars in the neighborhood, and yeah, they said that. Basically, things change. Unfortunately, my wife and I don't have that luxury of, of moving. We don't have the luxury of going somewhere else to enjoy peace and quiet. I don't hold anything against you, Mr. Rosendahl. It's your job, you're the politician. However, we do not have the voice nor the power to even be heard. We can't afford consultants and all that kind of stuff, and it just seems like we just get swept, swept away, you know? Our community's been there for a long time, and things change, but at what cost do we get? We get no benefit from this.
Timothy Dallinger, for my last one minute. The reason I said this was a blank check is that, for example, Mr. Rosendahl never received an answer to his letter to the Department of Transportation raising the questions that I read off to you. The shuttle bus proposal, which is brand-new, has never even been submitted to the Department of Transportation, let alone assessed by it. The after-school program has never been assessed by the Department of Transportation. And furthermore, the homeschool contract at the Plum hearing, the city attorney present stood up and said, "The city attorney cannot enforce that contract." So you have an enforcement issue that is merely a promise. That's the blank check. All you have in front of you are promises to consult about feasibility with the Department of Transportation. What you don't have are hard, rock-hard proposals to the DOT, which have been assessed and approved. That's no basis to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The other cards they may have left, but for the record, Sam Nichols, Christian Birdsong, and... and Tina Almond did speak, correct? John Barber, and Vicky Torito. All right, now this is for, for 14. Got that. Now we have those who are for the proposal. I'm going to call these names up, and please centerline, one minute comment. Craig Lawson, Sharon Weir, Fred Gaines.
Counselman, we were going to, we were going to address it under item 36.
All right, got it. But I just got, I'm doing what the law requires. They signed 14, we've got to call it. Julie Redman, Monica Estrada, Paul Grand, Judy Johnson, David Rosenstein, and Wayne Spindler. Wayne Spindler's not here? Okay, good. These are all 14 and 36. So I have no other calls on 14 at this time. No other cards. And because, Mr. City Attorney, may I ask your permission on this? Because some people may have filled out cards. Does anyone here want to speak on 14 who hasn't been called? Okay, please state your name for the record.
My name is Julie Redman, and I am for the school. I just wanted to say that as far as the traffic is concerned, there's not even traffic on Armocost at that hour. It's all coming down Westgate. It doesn't even go down that street, so I don't know what they're worried about. It's very busy on Westgate, and that's understandable, but we're talking two different completely times as far as traffic, so I want you to please take that into consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, this completes the public comment on 14. So, Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, thank you. And I want to thank those who came up to speak on it, and those who put the appeal in. But I would ask my colleagues to reject this, so we can move on to talk about the issue at 36. Thank you. So vote yes.
Any other speakers on the queue? No speakers? Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate to vote.
12 ayes.
12 ayes. It's approved.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, Madam Clerk.
Item 36.
Item 36. Would you push your number on that? Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah, if it worked, of course.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Could I ask staff to come up and describe 36 to us first? That will open up the public hearing, and then I will make some general comments, and then I'd like those who want to speak on this subject to come on up and speak. And I beg your indulgence, colleagues. This is a serious issue in our district, and I look forward to your continued discussion and support. Please describe what 36 is, and then I'll give my overview. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Lucy Barter with the Department of City Planning. The Department of City Planning, and the City Planning Commission approved, excuse me, approved a conditional use allowing a charter school to operate in an existing warehouse in the M2 zone. The planning commission imposed a lot of measures to the operation of the school. That determination was appealed. It was sent then before Plum, which modified a significant number of conditions, and including plenty of which were volunteered by the applicant, including the reduction of the student enrollment without reducing the number of conditions or mitigation measures as imposed through the traffic management and monigate, traffic mitigation and monitoring program, excuse me. So I don't know what else I need to add, but the appeal before you was also one of the appellants through the conditional use permit that was approved was challenging the enforceability of the traffic management and monitoring program. And just to add again, that there is a plan approval condition in the modified conditions, which requires a year from the certificate of occupancy to review the operation of the school, and that includes the mitigation measures that would have been imposed through the program developed through DOT to monitor the trip cap and all the other mitigation measures imposed. As far as the busing at the school, the City Planning Commission did consider that, but we, as the Department of Planning, recommended that they did not consider that, because the applicant was proposing to provide transit subsidies to the students to take public transit, and we thought that was sufficient and not additional busing, which would just duplicate services to the site already. But the applicant volunteered to add that in addition to the other traffic mitigations that they were proposing.
Staff, anymore? Should I now go forward?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Mr. President, what I'd like, if it's approved by my colleagues, I'd like to have 10 minutes on either side of this issue, if we could do that, if we could take a vote on allowing a public hearing to take place.
Mr. Weisar, you second Mr. Rosendahl's motion. Thank you very much. Any objection? No objection. It's so ordered. It's going to be one-minute comment at the mark of the podium.
There'll be 10 minutes each side, and let them work out their 10 minutes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, if I could make a general opening comment, then before, both sides, 10 minutes either side, both sides, determine among yourselves who speaks in each of the 10 minutes, okay? So we can do that. And I thank you, colleagues, for indulging us to allow to do this. Folks, I oppose the, as you heard, the additional use permit. It's a City Planning Commission, because the proposed school was too large, failed to benefit and failed to protect its immediate neighbors, and failed to ensure adequate onsite recreational facilities for its students. I told New West to listen to its neighbors and work with them to address all concerns which have come from my constituents. At Plum, I supported New West with strengthened conditions that addressed our concerns, which I will describe. But I insist that the efforts continue to improve the benefits and protections to the neighborhood as well as the students. Here is what has changed since the initial Planning Commission action. The maximum enrollment has been reduced from 875 to 750. Students who graduate from the neighborhood's local LAUSD elementary school, that is Brockton Elementary, will automatically be admitted in the preference to New West. In fact, Brockton's principal, Kim Latimore, has embraced this opportunity. I have met with Kim, and through her leadership, I believe Brockton's future looks brighter, and its relationships with New West will be a critical part of that success. And what I said at Plum as well, I talked to Deezee, who was the head of the LAUSD, I talked to people who were involved in state charters, including Ted Mitchell, who used to be down the street there at Occidental, who became chair of it, and we have created what I call a game changer. Two things happened. First, the admissions policies of how you get into New West have been radically altered, where one page, simple page, for a person to apply. But those who are going to school right now, Brockton kids in that neighborhood, would automatically be able to go. So far, the class of this year, that's in the fifth grade, 22 out of the 35 have become part of the process. My staff and I met with the principal, we met with teachers, met with the kids, and then the head of New West came, and Sharon also spoke to the teachers and spoke to the students, and there is a genuine new day. And this is a game changer for charter schools and the public schools. They're all part of the same system. If you're a charter school and you're getting state money, LAUSD or state charter, the kids in the neighborhood should be part of that process. And this was a big deal. And frankly, when I talked to, to the head of New West, I said, "Look, if you can't let those local kids automatically walk down the street and go there, I can't support this." And they went through their board, they went through all kinds of things. And frankly, I think this is a true game changer, where charter schools and the LAUSD, regular schools can integrate. Can you imagine now, living in that neighborhood, and your kid goes to Brockton, they can go down the street to this charter school that's a high class, and get your degrees, and continue to work? We're going to work through that whole period to make sure those kids who get there get the support systems, so that they are genuinely part of that school, graduate, and it becomes for that young person, that young boy or girl, a real opportunity to make education work and to live in the neighborhood.
Mr. Rosendahl, you're over on the clock. We want to get to the public comment. Thank you.
Could I just?
You can wrap it up.
Okay, sure. For school year 2012-13, 22 of the 35 graduates, 63% will attend New West. More local kids means reduced traffic impacts to the neighborhood, and just as important, it enhances the educational opportunity for all children in the neighborhood. We have strengthened the neighborhood protections. In addition to conditions prohibiting students driving to school, prohibiting events with which more than exiting onsite parking is required. If for any reason any of the parking provided onsite is inadequate, then New West shall make arrangements for off-site, off-street parking until additional necessary parking is provided. There shall be a staff complaint line. A real person will answer the phone between 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and there will be records maintained evidencing the when complaints were made and when and how they were responded to. This record shall be considered when New West CUP is reviewed during the following plan approvals, year 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Trip caps for drop-off and pickup of students at the start and dismissal of school are subject to detailed traffic management and monitoring. That's the TMMP that you heard Mo mention. And New West after-school programs shall also be subject to TMMP, with all aspects to be fully mitigated. LA DOT shall review and approve New West's detailed plan to satisfy the requirements of its TMMP before New West can obtain its certificate of occupancy or temporary certificate of occupancy. Compliance with the TMMP shall be closely monitored under LA DOT supervision. New West onsite campus will now provide almost 6,000 additional square.
Is that in the record, Mr. Rosendahl?
I just have to read one word for the record.
But is it in the record? Is it in the record? You're reading it. They're going to get it all. Get it into the record.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. President. In addition, New West shall demonstrate contractual relationships with all off-site recreation facilities before New West can obtain its certificate of occupancy or temporary certificate of occupancy. In closing, with splendid cooperation and leadership from New West Principal Dr. Sharon Weir, and the incredible extensive community engagement, and Brockton's Principal Kim Latimore, we now have a project that we can embrace, that benefits our community, protects New West neighbors. I urge your support. And permit parking will be part of that process. People who want permit parking, they get the signatures in the neighborhood. If I have to go out there and dig the holes and put the signs?
You got it, Mr. Rosendahl. Dig the holes, but let's dig into the public comment right now, okay? I'm rolling that. Thank you very much. Okay, right now, for those, for those who are opposed to this issue, I got a call on that, okay? So those who filled out cards, because unusually we don't fill out both numbers at the same time, okay? Ann Patel, come on up here. Marilyn Noes, Sam Nichols, Christian Bertsong, Kaz Torio, John Barber, Tina Almond, Tracy Grand, Lisa Zumba, and Mr. Herman. This is what we have. Hold on. One minute each. Here we go. Mr. City Attorney?
Are we supposed?
This is another reminder that this is a fair hearing matter, requiring the council members to heighten attention to the speaker at the podium or at their monitors, at their desks.
I call all the names. You have 10 minutes. When it's over with 10, use your time judiciously. Counselor, go ahead.
Mr. President, we were advised that we would have a 10-minute block before the one-minute comments. That's what Mr. Rosendahl told us, and I believe that's.
Well, I think Mr. Rosendahl may have made air. I'm calling the city attorney's request here to follow what is our protocol.
So we're not going to have 10 minutes, Bill?
For comment, one minute each. 10 minutes each, please. Is this Ann? Ann?
I'm sorry.
This is a public hearing in committee.
I'm confused, because I thought we had 10 minutes, and we, and then we were going to have public comment of one minute each, and I wanted to speak in the public comment. I didn't want to speak in the 10 minutes allotted.
Let me rule right now. Here's what we're going to do. We're given a 10-minute block, one-minute comment for anyone who filled out a card for this. There already was a public hearing. Public hearing is not required at this time, but we want to make sure we hear the public, that all of you came down. So at this time, you have one minute. Madam Clerk, get ready for the clock, and state your name for the record.
My name is Ann Patel. I, I'm upset because we have not discussed parking code variance. When, when you change to a new, CUP to a new thing, you have, you have to have a variance. And there's supposed to have, under the variance, at least 100 spaces on the site, and they only have 55. And the other thing is, next year, if anybody's listening to me up there, there's 80 people from Brockton are supposed to somehow fit into the pattern of New West, because that's how many there'll be next year. And I don't understand how possibly this could be enforced or work out.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Marilyn Noes. Our part of West Los Angeles is the dumping ground for the area. All the traffic goes through our district. People who live in all your districts work in Santa Monica and drive through West LA to get there and back. There's something really reprehensible about the fact that the people who are the elite guys get to bring their kids into our neighborhood, create the traffic problems, usurp our amenities, our park, our high school's facilities, and we just have to lie down and take it here. This is a land use issue. This is an imposition on the neighborhood that has a plethora of private schools there already. This is a state-chartered school. Don't get confused with LAUSD-chartered schools. This is a whole different thing. They want to be in our neighborhood because we got a Title I school, and they get a sweetheart deal in Sacramento, and it's on our backs, and I don't know why you're not defending us.
Thank you, Ms. Noes. Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Tina Gruen. Regarding Mr. Rosendahl's comment about enrollment, in which the most recent New West charter proposal outlines a plan that is either untenable or deceptive. As presented, enrollment increases during the first three years of expansion, from ninth grade with 575, 10th grade with 680, to 11th grade with 750 students in the year 2014-15. If that is truly the maximum enrollment allowed for the site, then what happens in their fourth year, when 11th graders should move up to 12th grade? Does the school suspend enrollment for incoming 6th graders in order to maintain the 750 enrollment cap? Does the school expel all seniors to allow for a new 6th grade class? Or is it true that this plan only works if you assume New West Charter plans to appeal for an increase in enrollment in 2015 to follow their original plan of 875 students? If the last suggestion is true, their negotiations are in bad faith.
Next speaker, please state your name.
Hi, my name's Sochi Gonzalez. I'm speaking now as a stakeholder and a neighbor in the area. In 2010, New West had one ESL student. They had eight students from economically disadvantaged backgrounds, and they had no students with disabilities. That's less than 3% of their student body. In a community in which 80% of the children in our elementary schools qualify for free lunches and is predominantly Latino, I am horrified by these numbers. The LAUSD rejected their petition for a charter, and I'm quoting here, "Because their petition does not present a comprehensive description for achieving racial and ethnic balance, because their petition fails to comply with the requirements of Crawford versus the Board of Education, the City of Los Angeles Court Order, and LAUSD's integration policy." As city council people, you must uphold the law, and you cannot allow these racial segregation policies to continue. The city council should not support publicly funded schools that practice segregation.
Thank you. Next speaker, state your name.
Timothy Dallinger, appellant. This is your second blank check that you're being asked to sign. Mr. Rosendahl, on February 14th, wrote a letter to the Planning Land Use Management Committee, saying, "I am opposed to the current proposal for the expansion of New West Charter, and will remain opposed unless and until the project is altered to have significantly smaller traffic impacts and better recreational facilities for students." That has not been done. The record is materially incomplete. There was a parking requirement imposed by the zoning and parking code of 100 parking spaces. This is a changed use, and Parking and Zoning Code, Section 1223B8, says specifically, "If you change the use, you have to comply with the current code." Current code requires 100 spaces. In order to change that, they have to apply for a variance. They have never even talked to the zoning administrator about a They've never even talked to the zoning administrator about a variance. You cannot approve this without a variance.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Sir, my name is John Barber. I'm a resident. Can I allow my time to Mr. Dallinger, because we have a lot of information--
Oh, no, we don't allow that. But you feel free to speak.
Well, I'm just against the school project, and I think that the facts have not been brought out. And basically, there's a lot of information that really needs to be more or less evaluated before the school is allowed to proceed. The neighborhood is very upset about it. I mean, we are for schools. We do think they have a great school. We just think that there's a lot of stuff, a lot of loopholes, a lot of empty promises have been made, and we feel that it needs to be decided before you guys can move forward allowing them to have their CUP.
John, thank you very much. Next speaker.
Arthur Cassin. The foundation for the TMMP is monitoring. That's what the second M stands for. DOT has suffered great diminishment in its personnel, enormous cuts in staff. They do not need extra work. They are, in fact, going out and soliciting private engineers to help them with what normally they used to do completely in-house. Now they are not able to do what they normally had to do. How are they going to keep up with monitoring of this school and all of the other schools that they have to monitor? I know of a school in CD11 that monitored for a number of years, and then they stopped monitoring, and there were no consequences from DOT. I know of a school in CD5 that never started monitoring after they were supposed to. They never did it once. There were no consequences from DOT. That's how monitoring really works.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mark Suzuki again. I'm a resident. Very, very simply, I am a foster parent. I have a little girl. Mother was an alcoholic and beat the shit out of her. I have custody of her, and she's just finished up Vermont Elementary School, which is Vermont and Adams. You know where it is? It's a very ethnically schooled. She's a Latina, 100%, and she stays with me with her older sister, who is now in college. Mr. Rosendahl approached me to say, "Maybe there's a way of getting her into New West, since I live 50 feet away from the front door." Now, if that's possible, might make me happy. Maybe we'll talk to Dr. Weir and see whether she's eligible. And yes, she tests high, extremely intelligent, and is a gifted student.
That's St. Agnes?
Not-- no, it's one behind St. Agnes, Vermont Elementary.
Got it. Very good. All right. I have no other speakers. You can speak. It's the last speaker on this side.
Hi, my name's Suzanne Fisher. I live about 75 feet from the proposed location of the school. And I have a six-year-old, and I would think that you would think that I would be very happy that a charter school of such high esteem would be moving in. But it's been brought to my attention that they actually have-- it's against California Education Code and that they allow kids from the neighborhood in unless it's an existing elementary school that's been changed to a charter school. It's against California Education Code to let neighborhood kids in unless it's an existing elementary school that is being changed to a charter school. So to say that Brockton Elementary kids can go into the school is just a flag that they're holding up in the hopes that the neighbors will walk away. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's complete those who are against the proposal at this time. Now, those who are for the proposal, Mr. Craig Lawson. I'm gonna call on all these names here. Sharon Weir, Fred Gaines, Julie Redmond, Monica Estrada, Paul Grand, Judy Johnson, Susan. We got you earlier. Thank you very much. Go ahead, please.
Mr. President, members, my name is Craig Lawson, a land use consultant here on behalf of New West Charter School. I want to-- I'm joined here today by a number of supporters of the school. I would like to ask them, please, to raise their hands at this time, and thank you very much for waiting. Please note the following documents for the record that we've submitted. A March 19, 2012 letter submitted by Fred Gaines of Gaines &amp; Stacy. A March 16, 2012 letter from Ron Hirsch, our traffic consultant with Hirsch Green Transportation. A February 28 letter that I submitted to the Plum Committee with various exhibits. And also before you are the modified findings and conditions of approval. New West is a high-performing public charter school authorized by the State Board of Education, which operates as a middle school with 340 students. Located in West LA, the CUP before you would allow it to relocate to a new site with a much larger building and to add additional students in the high school grades. May I continue?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Conclude your remarks, Craig. Conclude your remarks.
The conditions are before you. We ask you to approve the modified conditions, to approve the modified findings, and to support the Plum Committee report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Sharon Weir.
Good afternoon, Honorable Councilmembers. My name is Sharon Weir. I'm the principal and executive director of New West. We are very excited about this relocation project and request your direct support. New West is a high-performing California distinguished school with the longest waitlist of any public school in Los Angeles. We are confident that we will be a very positive addition to this location and are committed to working with the community to ensure we are good neighbors. In addition, we have been working very closely with the community and Councilman Rosendahl over the past several months, and we are very excited to offer a condition-free admissions preference program that is absolutely legal to the local elementary school for the first time. Over the past few weeks, I have personally reached out to the graduating students at Brockton Elementary and their parents to ensure that their admission applications were completed and submitted by the March 16 deadline for the next school year. This effort has dramatically increased the number of applicants from Brockton and will result in about 63%--
Thank you. Conclude your remark real quick.
Will result in about 63% of the graduating students from Brockton Elementary being admitted into the New West--
Thank you very much. Fred Gaines, the next speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, honorable members. Fred Gaines of the Law Offices of Gaines &amp; Stacy, Land Use Counsel for New West School. Just to remind the council, there are two items in front of you. One is a request for a conditional use permit. This is an allowed use in this zone with a conditional use permit. You're being asked to make the findings for the conditional use permit. Those findings are before you. They've been vetted by your planning commission, by your Plum Committee, and we ask that you adopt those findings based on all of the evidence that's been put before you, written in oral testimony. The second issue is for you to certify the mitigated negative declaration. You've heard some testimony today about changes in conditions. That is, in fact, the process. Sequel Guideline 15064 allows conditions of approval to be developed during the hearing process that are added to the process even after a mitigated negative declaration is developed to address issues that are raised. And that's exactly what's occurred in this case. We'd ask for your support for those two proposals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Identify yourself, please.
My name is Julie Redmond.
Hi, Julie.
On behalf of the Redmond family residence at 1935 Southwest Gate Avenue, both homeowner and community members for over 60 years now, also in the direct zone of the proposed location for New West Charter High School, in favor of the high school in the neighborhood and believe it a great addition to the community, as well as an outstanding education for potentially hundreds of young adults. I ask the city council to seriously take into consideration Proposition 13, where charter schools were voted into the Los Angeles Unified School District for reasons, and therefore would not make sense to deny New West Charter High School at this time, especially on commercial property. Again, would you rather have a manufacturer in the neighborhood with chemical runoffs polluting our water lines, posing even more health problems in the city of Los Angeles? Concerned neighbors have mentioned the lottery entrance for New West and believe it unfair not to allow children directly from the community priority, and worries about noise with more children at the park. I ask you to keep in mind all of the charter schools in the neighborhood enroll students in the same fashion, which is nothing new to the community. Parks are ideal for children to play and exercise, and the children at New West are so well-behaved and will be sure to possess the utmost respect for neighbors. I also add that whether our son has the pleasure of attending New West Charter High School come fall, we are still in favor of charter high school education in New West High School in the neighborhood, leading towards a brighter future and an uplifting to the community.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
We welcome New West Charter High School with open arms.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Kristen Birdsong. I'm here as a proud parent of two straight-A students at New West, and I'm also an attorney that oversees a truancy prevention program. On a daily basis, I work with schools plagued by truancy, delinquency, recidivism, and schools that lack the parent's support to effectively combat these problems. Unlike all of the schools with which I work, New West Charter does not have any of these problems. New West Charter has the highest test scores and longest waiting lists because of one important factor: buy-in. New West has a buy-in of its administration, teachers, parents, and students to ensure a superior and diverse academic environment and to ensure that this community will benefit from this superior school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Birdsong. Next speaker.
My name is Lisa Zimbal. I have a son at New West and a daughter at Hamilton High. Both my kids have been given a great public school option. The schools could not be more different. My kids could not be more different. Choice is good. Education is not one-size-fits-all. New West Charter's homeschool contract is a large part of why this school is successful. It helps the school operate on a logistical level. Dr. Weir sets out the rules, we follow them. And as important as the nuts and bolts of the whole homeschool contract is, the sense of participation and community it fosters within the families is even more important. So few schools take time to articulate expectations. New West Charter is really smart that way. The contract articulates expectations, and then something wonderful happens. A dialogue begins between parents and kids and school. It's so simple, but taking that moment at the beginning of each school year to read over this contract, let's talk about what it means for the school to move into a new neighborhood, how to be a good neighbor.
Thank you very much. We have 2 minutes and 50 seconds left between you. We cut it off. 2 minutes. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I just wanted to address something--
Your name, please.
Oh, for the record, Monica Estrada. I'm a proud mother and proponent of the New West Charter community and its high school expansion efforts. From my family, New West has been a true beacon in murky scholastic waters. My daughter Isabel has always showed such potential that when it came time for a middle school selection, the remaining in our homeschool district would be doing her a disservice. New West Charter illuminated the way to choices we never imagined possible. When Isabel and I attended open house for New West, we never knew of the possibilities of the inexhaustible dedication that the faculty displays on a daily basis with their uncanny commitment to every student. Sadly, we have a lot of opponents standing in our way. Why would anyone be against the progress of these young people or of a place that facilitates and advocates such a platform? As a parent, we do whatever it takes to do our part to make things happen. They may seem like impediments to some, but to us, it's just another Tuesday.
Thank you, Ms. Estrada.
Thank you.
We've got 1 minute 44 seconds.
Hi, I'm Paul Grand. I'm a parent at New West Charter. Just want to speak quickly to the conduct of the students at the school as well as the parents. The students at New West know how lucky they are. The school has a lottery system for admission. So when the students get into the school, it's not something they've been entitled to, it's something that they know they are now lucky to have achieved. And the homeschool contract that you've heard about is absolutely enforced. So the kids at the school behave in a way that's very different than you would in a school where you're just entitled to go there because it's in your neighborhood. When it's a school you get in as a lottery, you know how lucky you are, and the kids really understand that and appreciate it. And they volunteer with the community. It's something they really look forward to, and we're very excited to be part--
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Katrina Taylor. I'm the special education coordinator at New West. New West offers a variety of programs to special education students. These programs are focused on providing services to students with disabilities at a high level. New West creates services that are designed to meet the need and support different needs of each of our students. These programs give students the confidence to do well because they are held to the same standards as their peers. New West has allowed me the opportunity to serve students and share in their individual successes as they journey through New West. I have been privileged to see students leave their comfort zones and speak in front of rooms filled with adults such as yourself. I have been privileged to see the smiles on students' faces as they pass math tests or as they have become members of their peer groups. The opportunity of a New West high school means an opportunity for students to enter into a program that is dedicated to providing support across the course subjects and giving them an opportunity to be a part of the community, both academically and socially. Please do not be mistaken, the special education program at New West is thriving and ready to see students enter into the next phase of life.
Thank you, Coach. The last speaker, real quick. We've got about 24 seconds.
My name is Judy Johnson. I'll make it quick. We are fully aware that securing the armored cost property is an extraordinary opportunity, and we will make sure we treat it as such. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The city attorney asked that I give the opposition 30 seconds, since I ran over time. So, Counselor, don't start the clock till he gets to the microphone. Mr. City Attorney, 1 minute then.
Thank you. Timothy Dallinger, appellant. The Brockton Elementary School issue, the automatic enrollment, is a red herring. It's contrary to California law. Education Code, Section 4605, Bill plainly says, unless you're an existing public school converting to a charter school, you cannot do what you're proposing to do. It is illegal. I don't think your staff did you any good by not doing their research before you made the proposal, and that's your big excitement. That's your game changer. Can't be done in California, Bill. It's illegal. A parking variance is required. Without it, it's illegal. I think you should have done some research on that as well, sir. Thank you.
You, Counselor, on the cue. Mr. Weezer, you have a comment? Your figure hit the--
Yes, Mr. Rosendahl wants to go last. I have a few questions--
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll go now.
Real quick? Thank you.
I have a couple of questions that were raised to the school in terms of the demographics of the school. Number one, Brockton Elementary School, there's an agreement now that you will take more students from Brockton. What are the demographics of Brockton, and what are the demographics of New West Charter?
So we have 50% Caucasian kids and 50% ethnic minorities mixed together.
About economically disadvantaged students?
So about 14% socially, economically disadvantaged.
At 14%? And how about Brockton?
It's 74%.
70?
Four.
74%? So if you did a lottery to begin this school, how come the big disparity between Brockton and this school?
So it really just depends on where they're coming from.
Pardon me?
It's open enrollment. Any student can apply for New West.
Okay, so why the big disparity between Brockton students and this school?
I don't know.
If you had a lottery, the low-income student parents didn't know about it, didn't apply?
From Brockton, from the past?
Yes.
So we've had students in the past from Brockton. We've definitely had kids from--
No, but my question is, I was told at Plum that you did a lottery when you started this school, and that's how you started, and that now you're gonna have a new plan where you can agree to have a certain number of students, or they're gonna have the first option from Brockton students to come over. But if you did a lottery in the beginning, I would imagine it'd be close to the same demographics that exist in the area, but it's not. There's a huge disparity, 74% to 14%. So why that big disparity? Is it even a concern to you? If it's not, it's not.
Right. Well, for New West Charter, we have what's called a lottery. So we have people from 54 different zip codes all over LA. So with that particular bowl of students, it's hard to replicate our immediate neighborhood versus the Los Angeles area as a greater whole.
Okay, so the immediate area didn't necessarily have-- I mean, you took zip codes from all over.
Yes.
But a lottery's a lottery.
Lottery's a lottery.
It's not confined to anything.
That's correct.
It's just open to everyone.
That's correct.
But there was a huge disparity in terms of local types.
Yes.
And I'll say this. Look, in terms of the CUP and your environmental review process, that's what we're judging this on, and it's up to our planners, our city attorney, our local councilman. I agree with that. I would have a much different approach if I was sitting at the school board, and you were denied from LAUSD for some reasons, and I probably would agree for that denial. In fact, the chart that you gave out at the Plum Committee, it says, when I'd ask you about your school finances, it says, you know, list all revenue, and it says, for example, Title I is for programs that are for underperforming students. Title I is for programs that are for underperforming students. Title I is not for underperforming students. Title I is for economically disadvantaged students. Because they're economically disadvantaged does not automatically mean that they are underperforming students. So it concerns me that a school like you would be putting out this type of information that doesn't get or grasp the issues surrounding economically disadvantaged students, and that is of great concern to me. We're not reviewing your academic portfolio, the types of students you attract, what you do on the educational level. That is of huge concern to me. But other than that, we're not rating you on that. We're rating you on the CUP and other things, and I have no issue with that.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl.
I think that was very thoughtful, Mr. Weezer, having been on the school board and being president of the school board, your comments, and I appreciate that. Let me just add for the record an amendment, too, and then I want to comment directly on that. The amendment is a substitute for 2C, year 2014 and '15, and years following, the maximum is 750 students. 4E, if at any time the parking provided onsite is inadequate as determined by the applicant or the Department of City Planning at the time of the plan approval review pursuant to Condition Number 11, or at any time if requested by the council member for the Council District 11, then arrangements shall be made for off-site, off-street parking, providing the additional parking spaces necessary. Such parking arrangements shall be reviewed by DOT and the Department of City Planning pursuant to Conditions Number 11 and 15. And the last one is 5A, an after-school program for up to 20%, that is 175 at maximum enrollment of the enrolled students, shall be allowed until six, subject to the applicant then being in compliance with Condition 15F. Do you have a second for that?
Second by Mr. Zein, so you have that to the clerk to add it to the motion.
And one other comment I'd like to make, Mr. Weezer.
Well, we're running out of time, Mr. Rosendahl. I would just say that if you want to make a comment, you have a...
Yeah, I totally agree with you. What the game changer is, is that if you are a student in Brockton, you will have an automatic opportunity to go down the street as a preference to go to New West. And when we met with the principal and the teachers, they got so excited that 22 out of the 35 graduating class this year will be going. And when I talked to LAUSD and to the state, they then passed a resolution on their board making that happen. So this is where the game changer is. A local elementary school from kindergarten to fifth, the kids can come down the street and actually go to this school. It's a great opportunity for them, and the school will work with these young men and women of the future in a dramatic way. So if I lived in that neighborhood and had a child in first grade or second, I knew they could come down the street. That's what got me excited, that it would be a game changer in the neighborhood.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. There are no other speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
What's before you is the Planning and Land Management Committee Report as amended.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
10 ayes. Thank you very much. Thank you, staff. Thanks, everyone, for participating. Fourth with on that item. Madam Clerk, what's next?
Item 53, closed session.
Good. Members, at this time, I want to ask you, we have item 53, which is closed session. It should be quick. Is everybody okay with that right now? All right, sergeants, would you clear and prepare the John Farrow chambers for a closed session?[809.91]
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember: lock it, or lose it.
in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair. Say better than well, we begin with an eyewitness news exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation, and we're just not going to tolerate it.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used, and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people, as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong, and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is slight, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act, including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail, and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the Weetir hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. Weetir hotline, 909-987-5005.
Most seats for posting a referral.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting a referral.
So ordered.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember design requests to leave at twelve on March twenty-first. Councilmember Garcetti requests to leave at one on March twenty-first and to leave at eleven forty-five on March twenty-seventh. Councilmember Englander requests to leave at eleven forty-five on March twenty-third. Councilmember Labons requests to arrive at twelve PM on March twenty-seventh. Councilmember Perry requests to leave at eleven thirty AM on April tenth and to be excused on May first, May fourth, and June first for city business. Councilmember Alacón requests to be excused on May fourth for city business.
So ordered on all those matters.
The desk is clear.
Any announcements, any announcements that rise for adjourned motions at this time? Adjourned motions, call on Mr. Reyes.
Colleagues, I adjourn in the honor of Josefine, who was born to the parents of Condado Bonilla and Carmen Ramirez in Sacualco de Torres Jalisco, Mexico, on February sixteenth, nineteen thirty-one. She was born with a twin and was one of three children. She resided in Lincoln Heights ever since her arrival in this country in nineteen fifty-six, where she eventually bought the family's first home in September nineteen sixty-four. Married for nearly fifty years to her husband Francisco, who preceded her in death, Josefine was the anchor of the family. While receiving only a limited formal education in native Mexico, Josefine stressed the importance of education to her six children. Indeed, together with her husband, they worked diligently to ensure that all her children were educated in Catholic schools, including Sacred Heart Elementary School, Sacred Heart High School, and Cathedral High School. Today, her children still marvel at how their parents were able to manage having all six of them in private schools at the same time. This just reinforced Josefine's desire to make sure that each of her children received a college degree, and they all did. An active member of Sacred Heart Church for nearly fifty years, Josefine served as a Eucharist minister, member of the choir, as well as a member of the Guadalupanas. She also began a prayer group in nineteen seventy-eight and served as its leader for During her time at Sacred Heart Church, she also helped begin the Sunday breakfast after each mass and assisted with food distribution on Thursdays for the needy. A proud resident of Los Angeles, Josefine was even prouder when she became an American citizen in nineteen eighty-four. Indeed, once a citizen, she never missed an election and even served the city valets as a poll worker on many occasions. More as a show of devotion to her adopted country, had given her so much, Josefine was known to display her American flag on holidays and always encouraged others to vote and be active. She was a perfect example of someone living the American dream. A member of Uno, the United Neighborhood Organization, and Movimiento Familiado Cristiano, Josefine Gomez passed away on February thirteenth, two thousand and twelve. Colleagues, I knew her since I was in the first grade. My classmate Gil Gomez went together through grammar school and high school, and she was that person that would pick up the kids when it would rain, take them home. She essentially was that person that essentially was the mother to all of us at all the school events. And those of us who grew up in these environments understand how important and how much we treasure that experience. Her sons Frank and Hector are here. Thank you for your patience. Been here since the beginning. She is survived by Hector, Gil, Condado, Carmen, Peter, and Frank, six grandchildren, Marie, Emily, Joey, Diana, Sean, Chad, and one great granddaughter, Eva. Josefine, we will miss you, and thank you for all the great memories.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Alcon.
Councilmembers, as many of you probably know, the Spanish-language news is, and typically are, the number-one-watched news programs in the Los Angeles area. And I'm very sad to announce that a face that is very familiar to anybody who's a